Good evening, and thank you for viewing the special meeting of the Arcata City Council to set goals for the 2023-24 fiscal year. The city council meeting is being held in hybrid format, in person and on Zoom. Will the city manager please call the roll?
Mayor Schaefer?
Present.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman?
Present.
All present.
Okay, so we will open this meeting by taking public comment. So as this is a special meeting, we will take public comment now at the beginning of the meeting only for items that are on the agenda, though it is a broad agenda item. If you are interested in providing public comment on the City Council 2023-24 fiscal year goals, please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press star nine now to unmute your phone and you will be placed or press star nine to be placed in the speaking queue, and then you'll press star six to unmute. And then speakers are limited to three minutes, and so when it is time for public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak. So if anybody who is here in person now wishes to make public comment this evening on the agenda item of our goal setting, please make your way to the podium now. Just stand up and go to the podium to make comment.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary. My comments are sort of broad but apply to this piece of paper and all these items. I got my hair braided yesterday or two days ago, I can't remember now. But I was going to speak last time at City Council about the concept of three and how braids are beautiful because they take three strands and bring them together and make a solid type of thing, and that makes it really strong and good. And I think when I look at all this, I want us to think about braiding it together and connecting things on these pieces of paper as priorities. You know, if it comes to the houselessness, we've got to think about transportation for people to get to places to help them out. When we think of sea level rise, we need to think about housing and adapting to a changing geography. When we talk about, well, the transit I already kind of talked about, but what we're experiencing right now is going to be something we're going to be experiencing ongoing, this extreme weather changes and our need to really step up and be prepared and be able to adapt to what's happening in the future, you know, quickly and whatever. So I think a major priority for me in looking at all this and connecting it all is emergency preparedness. So we can all as community find the strengths and the specialties of everybody in the community to come together and help as needed, not just a general, "We need you to come help, we need you to come help because you have an expertise in this," or "You can help us with this." And really design our community in a way that connects everything that's on this piece of paper and with all the people in the community who really care about wanting to make this a vibrant place. And I kind of just want to close by saying, as I've said in the past, Arcata can be better than it thinks it is. So I really would like for you to think about that. Thank you.
Good evening. Yesterday, I sent pretty much all of you basically details of sort of like what we're addressing tonight as far as climate change and where our growth in the city is going to go. So I hope you had a chance to read some of it. Some of it was articles from the past. So it's the most important question you've got to ask yourself, and we have a lot of information from experts here in town. And so I've been trying to, you know, give another side to the coin as far as making the right decision. And I feel strongly that we're going down in the wrong, the wrong direction as far as where we're going to be developing because of sea level rise, because of earthquakes. And it's unfortunate if we do that. I mean, we should really be focused on someplace like higher ground so we don't have to worry about sea level rise. And I was looking at some older videos from 2016 in the city, and basically, you know, our city leaders had the exact same idea. They were on my side on this. They said, basically, "Let's head towards the hills and develop there and not in the wetland areas that, you know, we're going to see in a couple of weeks some experts come in to address this." But I've already done a lot of research, and I don't think they're going to be supporting development in those areas. So this is really the most important question. Where are we going to build? Secondary or question is, you know, basically, what, how many stories? I mean, we basically have heard from the fire department that have pretty much given you a strong indication at this time, they only want three stories. And exactly what's stopping us right now from developing three, four stories? I mean, we really want to go three. I mean, I think a question was asked from the City Council last week is, right now, there is no reason why somebody, a developer, can't come along and develop right at this moment. You don't even have to wait for the future. And basically, that's another question you should be asking yourself and maybe have another conference here on bringing developers in and asking them why at this moment they aren't pursuing and doing a development. I don't see any public opposition to any, like Sorrel Place or Vista Point or any of this. I don't see any pushback from the public as far as development, you know, and I don't see any developer stepping forward. I don't see a planning commission that's going to stop it. They're pretty much pro-development, so it should be really happening right now if it's going to happen. Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Fred Wise. It's good to see you all here tonight. I applaud what you're doing and look forward to hearing this evening's comments. I just have a small comment about process. This handout that we got for those in the audience of the working draft of the goals, this is not in the agenda. It's not in the binder, and I doubt that it's available to people at home online who are watching this meeting. If it could be possibly put online?
It's just a different format.
It's worded different also. The words are different in a couple of places that I checked. So it is a different document. It is. It's not, this is different from what's on the agenda. I can give you some examples, but I don't want to get into it. But it's, this should be available online for people who are watching at home. Thank you.
Okay, any in-person public comment? Come right on up.
Okay. I was just looking this over, and I actually came to talk about the marsh a little bit, and I thought maybe that was...
Who are you?
Oh, I'm supposed to introduce myself. I'm Sharon Tecker. I've lived here 59 years.
Russ Shaddix came here in 1959.
Yeah, and we walk the marsh a lot in the bird sanctuary and love it, you know. And I want to thank you, if you were in charge of getting the gate closed tonight. I thought that was very important, especially since it was in the newspaper about all the needles and the trash that was collected there. I think just that simple thing of closing the gate was a great idea. And I see here on number one about creating a safe space here in, safe to walk in our beautiful bird sanctuary. If we can do something there to add that to the beautify, let's see, support the city's capital improvement program, if that is on there, I don't know. And you wanted to say something about up here?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I've been involved with St. Vincent de Paul since 1981 in Eureka, well aware of the issues with homeless and people on the street, so forth. One of the things that keeps coming back, though, that I become aware of is that until you provide the opportunity for someone, a place to land, you really can't do a heck of a lot about people sleeping in doorways at businesses or people congregating down at the marsh or whatever. It's very difficult for you to enforce that, and I'm aware of that. But I think that should be a real priority for any city is to offer that opportunity. But with that has to come some reeducation of the people that are sleeping in doorways and so forth when they have an opportunity to be someplace else, warm and out of the way. So I think there's a two-step thing, is provide a place for people to go, then you can start backing up, you know, whether getting in the way of a curb on 14th Street or on Soma Boulevard every other day, cluttering up that boulevard. These things can be handled if you look into something like camps, some alternatives where people can go. It'll work. So appreciate you considering it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more in-person public comment? We won't be going back and forth. All right, we will now check for any public comment on Zoom this evening.
Our first comment is Raylina. Go ahead, Raylina.
Hey, sorry, just to clarify, this is general comments.
So this is a special meeting, so it's general comments on the item of the agenda tonight, which is goal setting.
Sure. Okay, I've got a few goal-setting things. So in reviewing the documentation for tonight, there's some things outlined for housing, but we'd like to see more emphasis on renter protections in the goal-setting for the year. Just a few ideas to throw out there, but eliminating the ability to reset rents in between tenants is a community ordinance that might be worth considering. No more than 10% increase between tenants in an effort to reduce the overall, you know, runaway rent gouging that's happening right now with the expansion that we see in our city. Consider reducing the overall allowable rent to increase to 5% a year, down from 10% for existing tenants. Moratorium on no-fault evictions, if no-fault evictions continue, including four months of market rate rent to the tenants, or perhaps three months rent. When you consider the expenses and real cost of moving, finding a new place, this is the bare minimum that would be required for people to relocate. But in addition, provide, the landlord should be required to provide documentation and city-issued permits for substantial remodeling, for instance, in the case of no-fault evictions. We'd like to see something explored in terms of square footage cap for landlords with 20-plus apartments, for those with large number of rental units. Implementing a square footage rate rental cap would help to improve affordability for apartments, especially for those landlords that have economy of scale in their favor. This, of course, is something that, you know, needs more details to be implemented, but looking at something where we can look at the square footage of an apartment rather than tenant's income to implement a sort of ceiling for rental rates. Create regulations around mold inspections between tenants or at regular intervals for long-term rentals, with property owners responsible for regular mold inspections. And then also looking at how we can help tenants with pets. You know, having pets is pretty much a death sentence if you're a renter in Arcata. So looking at how we can create non-discriminatory pet policies around pet ownership and rentals and supporting renters with pets. There are already provisions for emotional service animals, but, you know, it's not a landlord's job to determine whether or not ESA or emotional support animal is needed.
Thank you, Raylina. That is your three minutes, and thank you for your comments.
All right, our next online speaker is Sylvia. Go ahead, Sylvia.
Hi, my name is Sylvia. I'm 27 years old. I'm an HSE alum, class of 2019, and I've been, this document was great. It was awesome to see that there's priorities for dealing with the houselessness issue. I found it a bit concerning that there was so much direct goals on reducing houselessness with no talk about helping tenants to get into affordable rentals. I'm a young professional. I had a job recently that was paying me $22 an hour, and I was working full-time, and I still could not afford to rent a one-bedroom apartment in the city of Arcata. So I'm going to ask for some goals to be included in the next year moving forwards, such as eliminating landlord's ability to reset rent between tenants, asking for no more than a 10% increase between tenants. It would be great to reduce the overall allowable rental rate increase to 5% a year for existing tenants, whereas it's at 10% right now. It would be great to get a moratorium on no-fault evictions and/or having no-fault evictions needing to include four, three to four months of market rate rent to the tenant from the person providing the no-fault eviction, as well as providing documentation and city-issued permits for substantial remodeling no-fault evictions. So if someone is being told they're being no-fault evicted for substantial remodeling, the landlord would also be providing city-issued permits and documentation. It would be really great to see some more support for tenants with pets in Arcata. Pretty much everybody has or wants to have a pet, but often landlords will discriminate against tenants that have pets, and they do it in such a way that it is very difficult to report or to even fight back on. So having maybe some regulations in place that support tenants with pets and maybe support landlords who want to rent but are continuing to discriminate. So trying to find some sort of happy medium there where we're supporting tenants while also holding landlords and property owners responsible for discriminating against people with pets. It would also be great to see some regulations around black mold inspections, because as we all know in Humboldt County, black mold is a real serious issue. And oftentimes, I feel like the onus is put on the tenant of like, it's your responsibility to keep the house not damp or dry, whereas I think the landlords and property owners need to have a little more responsibility for conducting regular black mold inspections between tenants or at some sort of regular interval for long-term rentals. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Do we have any more Zoom commenters?
No more online public comment.
All right. So that takes us to our new and only business of this evening, which is the City Council goal-setting for 2023-24 fiscal year. So each year, the City Council reviews the city's overarching goals and objectives and also works to set new priority goals. So this year, we will start by going through and reviewing the current year's priorities, and there are copies up here at the staff table if you did not get one and would like to follow along. And so we're going to kind of just move through each of these sections and have discussion and kind of decide which of these that are being continued, that we want to keep on here, or any other projects that we kind of want to add to each of these sections. So we'll kind of have maybe Karen hopefully lead us through each of these major sections, and then we can kind of go down the dais and discuss what we want to keep. And then also, if there is a thing that we want to add that has to do with that topic, that will be the time to bring it up, and we can kind of add it to our tentative list. All right, so if you want to give us an overview, Karen, and take us away.
Yeah, so tonight is, we'll call it dreaming within the boundaries of our budget constraints. In terms of really the council taking the time to prioritize what is collectively your highest-level priority projects as we begin to build the budget for the 2023-24 fiscal year, which will begin on July 1st of 2023. So what you'll see as we go through here, there are some priority projects for this current fiscal year, which we still have almost four months left in, that we do believe will be complete but maybe aren't complete right now. So I would still suggest that we take those off the list, anticipating that they would be completed by the end of this fiscal year. And if they're not, then we certainly would bring that back when we come into budget adoption, if we need more time on them. But I'd say we just jump right in, and we start with number one, which really is around, I think, in general, housing and strategies around homelessness reduction. And we have made a lot of progress in this section this year, and, but you do still have some goals that are on here. Your top 1A was to continue to work to identify an ongoing funding stream for services for the unhoused, as well as, you know, housing. With the dissolution of redevelopment, we lost a lot of access to housing and redevelopment funds. And while we are still very successful in our competitive grants to CDBG and several of the COVID stimulus funds and Home Key projects, obviously, in this area, we still really do have a dearth in funds to address some of the issues that I know certainly the council hears a lot about. So one of those was recognizing that we're in a presidential election cycle again in 2024. We do have in the city three-quarters of 1% or three-quarters of a percent left in the sales tax before we hit the state cap. So that is sort of the playroom that the council has. Tabitha was looking, and I think a quarter of a percent, just for conversation purposes, is about $850,000 currently on our TUT, and we have three-quarters left. So one-quarter of 1% is about $850,000 on sales tax. There's other things that we can look at, but just to give you a measure. So we're recommending that you continue that, whether, you know, that full three-quarters of 1% goes all towards that, or whether you decide as you work through goals and get into the city's budget process that you have some broader goals around that increment that's left. It would still require a ballot, you know, a ballot vote that we could gear up for in 2024, if that's the council's interest. I don't know if you want to, yeah.
So I, could you just explain that? You're saying that we have, well, a 1%, whatever, three-quarters of 1% goes towards what?
The state caps, how high sales tax can go in jurisdictions in California.
Okay, you're talking about how high?
Yeah.
But we're in the section on homelessness, so I'm thinking we're taking 1% of our three-quarters of a percent of taxes. Anyway, I just wanted to understand.
Yeah, so your goal, your priority project 1A was to identify ongoing funding streams, such as a sales tax for services that would help, you know, service those that are currently unhoused or, you know, require additional outreach services on the streets in Arcata. So that was last year, when you set your priority projects, a goal that you had set to look into for 2024. So the question really is, do you want to continue that and have staff work to gear something up for the council to consider this next fiscal year? Because it'd be the fiscal year you'd really want to prep for either the March or the November ballot of 2024.
Okay, I see a lot of head nodding, so I assume that everybody is comfortable with keeping that one going on, and now's your time to say no, if you don't.
It'll be interesting to see what is proposed, because we have other issues besides this too we have to deal with.
So I think that what Tabitha was estimating was about a quarter of, and so we would still have then another 50?
50 cents.
So we, so we're not using the whole part of the cap, we're just using a quarter of the three-quarters. So we have a little bit of wiggle room if we want to add something else. Am I?
Yeah, we can, and we certainly can have a broader discussion. This is where this topic fell in the council's priorities last year, was to try to identify some, a funding stream for homeless reduction services. But there are other needs in the city, too. I'm just sharing with the council that your room right now, between where our sales tax is and where the state currently caps it, there are cities that have asked for state legislation to raise that cap, but currently, where we are, we have three-quarters of 1% left that we could capture through a ballot measure to fund local projects here. Some of that could go towards this homeless reduction strategy. So we'll keep that on for now. B is support collaborative strategies to create safe spaces for those without shelters. We did initiate a safe parking program. We had one-year ARPA funds that will fund that through May. Arcata House Partnership is applying for a grant to try to do a second year of that program. I don't know, you know, at this point, we don't have an outcome from that grant yet, but we are seeking funds to fund a second year. It is an expensive program. I, you know, if it was a priority, we would look at that in the budget. I think we would be hard-pressed to budget that out of our general fund. And, you know, I'd say, without all of the initial setup costs, we're still going to be looking at at least $550,000 for a year. And, you know, I'd be hard-pressed to think that we would find that, just to be, you know, kind of candid. But if it was a priority, certainly, it would be time for us to hear that from the council. The other things on this list that we've had some success with, but certainly not complete, is cold-weather shelters, emergency warming stations, and then safe camping opportunities are all on that list.
So at the last housing meeting that they had on Monday, they were, the city of Eureka was referring to the fact that they would like to have a safe parking program. What I think is that we need to be working with other communities. They also wanted to put together a camping area. So maybe we, they could end up with a camping area, and we would end up with a safe parking in Arcata and figure out how we're going to fund them equally or together, instead of having us duplicate what, or duplicate what Eureka's doing, figure out how we can make all this work. And you attended their meeting, Kimberly, and so you heard some of the comments that they made in Eureka and their concerns, and so that's what I would like to see us work jointly with Eureka on these issues.
And just to piggyback on what Alex is saying, additionally, we should be collaborating more, I think, with the county as well. Is this a time to ask a question? So I'm always thinking about the biggest bang for a buck, and I just want to clarify. So the safe parking is $680,000. Is that for a year?
Yeah, that's what we budgeted for this year. It looks like we'll probably get 13 to 14 months out of those ARPA dollars. And we did have some initial startup costs, but I still think that we would be close to at least $550,000 for just straight operations, as lean as we've been able to get in a month.
And to clarify, we served, to date, 89 people? Just seems like that's not a big bang for a buck. If you do the math with the 680, I think it's like a little more than, almost seven, 6,800 per person. We could build a tiny home or a sleeping cabin for 5,000 with Sequoia Falk and Dan Falk, but doing something similar of what they did at St. Vincent de Paul, which we did talk about at the, or they talked about it, at the Eureka slash county homeless housing meeting. And I'm just putting that out there, that that's a lot of money. We could do permanent sheltering as opposed to just 12 to 14 months with that money, and we would still have money to offer supportive services for that, 2,000 to 3,000 per person.
But we have to have a location to do it. We have to have, you know, somebody that's going to manage it and the whole thing and put it together. So we, you know, I could have that idea, you have that idea. Do you have the property? Do I have the where-for-all to get it built and to happen? You know, it takes a lot to make this work, and that's why I think it's really good for us to see if we can't work more with Eureka and you put in the county, just so we aren't duplicating services, we're providing services. I, you know, I was at the night shelter on Sunday in the morning and at night, and there are people that don't want to be in Eureka, they only want to be in Arcata. It's just interesting listening to them and where they want to be and what they don't want to be. So we probably have people that'd be willing to be in our safe parking program here but wouldn't be willing to do it in Eureka. It's just, you know, everybody, you know, it's like, I like to live in Arcata. Other people like to live in Eureka or McKinleyville, or maybe wherever you can find a place to live. But, so we have, no matter if you're housed or not housed, you have those concerns of where you want to live. Anyway, that was my experience of listening to people talk for eight hours.
And yes, I concur. A lot of folks at The Grove have identified, you know, where they're from. So whether you're unhoused or housed, you have a place based, like, you know, I hail from Fortuna or Arcata or whatever. But again, I'm thinking, okay, so who would run it? Perhaps Arcata House Partnership could do the same thing that they're doing at Safe Parking. We do have some city surplus property that is supposed to go towards affordable housing. We do have some property out on West End that has already been zoned for homeless housing. And so, yeah, I think that it might be worth exploring, instead of something temporary that's only going to last us a year, to do something a little longer term in maybe looking at sleeping cabins or tiny houses.
Okay, Stacy's been waiting, so we're going to go to Stacy, and then we can come back to you, Alex.
My suggestion would be, since Arcata House is seeking funding for safe parking, I feel like they have that covered, that they're going to be working towards that. So I do suggest, because of the price and what suggest, because of the price and what, you know, that we cross that one off and let Arcata House take that. And then, you know, we do have, we have camping, which could also be, you know, tiny homes, that is on there, and I suggest we keep that, keep the warming stations, you know, and just cross off Safe Parking. That's my suggestion.
So, I'm sorry. So, Arcata House Partnership, they're working on a grant, but that won't cover all of Safe Parking, right?
We hope, if they get the grant, that it would continue to cover the full operations of Safe Parking. I will say, we worked on a homeless encampment grant with Cooperation Humboldt for property that the city does own, and it would have been sort of the tiny house. Operations were still close to around $450,000, $500,000 a year. I mean, it is sort of just the staffing cost associated with 24-hour staffing, at least until a point that, you know, an area or a campsite, if you would, or a group matures to a point of having some self-governance, but then you're hopefully paying people that are living onsite to do that work too, so you do still have, you know, most of that expense, so.
Well, and I think too, that, and you know, we could beef up D as well, but that long-term, you know, creating a cooperative housing model, I think that idea, while we were talking about that encampment grant with Cooperation Humboldt last year, that didn't come to fruition, but that was kind of the vibe of what we were thinking of with that, that goal D as well, to just, you know, look to be able to create something that could be like tiny home villages, that could be a bit more permanent than just a camping situation. And so, I think if we're all kind of feeling that way and wanting to talk about that, that we definitely should keep D on this list then as well. I think now that we've, we've all just kind of looked at the whole section and read them all, so we don't necessarily need to, you know, go one by one on those, but, and seeing how some of these overlap. But, I agree with Stacy, just of the mind that, you know, if Arcata House is seeking out grants, we can support them in that, if they, you know, need our help or anything, but letting, yeah, kind of turning that Safe Parking over, I totally agree with that to them, and then focusing more on, you know, I think if this winter has shown us anything, it was different than the last two winters, because it wasn't as much of a topic of conversation, that we need to have more of a contingency plan for cold weather sheltering, and, you know, no, starting now for next winter of what that's going to look like, and go into those collaborations. And I know some of us have been meeting with local folks about that, so I think keeping that. And then I know something that a lot of us have been hearing, and that we heard in public comment tonight, and that we heard at our committee chairs' meeting, is, you know, maybe looking more at some safe camping opportunities rather over the Safe Parking, to be able to, you know, get folks to have a place to go, and then say, you know, this is the spot where camping happens, and be able to support people in a space that has, you know, access to trash, access to bathrooms, et cetera, so.
So, what I, then, we know that Arcata House or at The Grove, they will have a cold weather shelter. They have the funding in order to fill the pool in, and when they do, then they will make the rest of the improvements for heat, et cetera. So, possibly, we can cross that off. And the other is out on Boyd Road, they are interested in building these small little units that we talked about, everyone's talked about, and I'm thinking that maybe we can get rid of number D, and then support them on Boyd Road on that project they want to do.
Well, I think that would be D then, if, or we can indicate, you know, help support creating a cooperative housing model at Arcata House Partnership's property at Boyd Road, if they, you know, I haven't, you know, Darlene's not here to tell us, yeah, we're doing that, so I don't want to.
I've been, I've been on that tour, I've been to wherever they want to do it, and where it'll fit, and how they can put that service together. So, I would say that we'd want to support them on Boyd Road without development. It is in the county, I mean, Boyd Road is in the county. As much as the city has wanted to annex that area into the city of Arcata, we don't have willing property owners.
So, while it is in the county, it's very, very close to being in Valley West, and of course, I'm sure that you guys have heard me say that I'm concerned about segregating and putting most of the unhoused services in Valley West, in particular, when we have 300 students that are going to be coming in the fall. And before we wrap up with a nice bow on the Safe Parking, I guess, I had an opportunity to tour it and spend some time there. I'm wondering if any of the other council members have, because I am thinking that we might want to tweak it. I know that it's just a lot of money, and what, I used to do program evaluations, so I have some ideas of how we might be able to make it better and serve more people, and get a bigger bang for our buck before we, just something to consider.
So, I would like to put in the Boyd Road, small units, and I don't know how you want to, you know, how you would like to do that, Sarah?
Yeah, so I think now then, you know, I think we've added a couple of things and taken out a couple of things to our existing. Thank you, Donette, for being our track changes as we go over here. And so, I think if there's anything at this point now that folks want to edit that is existing up there, let's get through that now, and then will be the time, and we can kind of just go in order of anything that we'd like to add under the section that we haven't already spoken about.
So, I would say the tiny houses can go down to help support Arcata Partnership's housing on Boyd Road, because that's what they would be.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but right now in Valley West right now, in addition to Boyd Road, we have 20 to 30 encampments at Carlson Park. We have 18 RVs, which is not the number of RVs, but there's, you know, each one of those have three to five people. We have two Home Key Projects, 149 units. Again, some of those are going to be double occupancy. We have the Arcata House Partnership Satellite. We also have the Hatcher Needle Exchange Program out there, and then, of course, we have 300 students. It just feels like if we add more to Boyd Road, we're adding more to Valley West, and this is a heavy lift. You know, I think that this lift needs to be done by the entire community and not just one neighborhood. So, that's my say.
So, one thing is, Hatcher does not distribute needles in Valley West.
Okay, Stacy's been waiting, so we're going to let Stacy throw in on that.
So, I think it's just important for us to remember that we're not voting on anything right now, we're putting on ideas. And so, like, we have tiny houses, we have Boyd Road. If we keep it on there, you know, that takes us, it allows us to have a larger discussion. That's when we, that's when we go into the details. That's when we, you know, we suss out where we want them and all that. So, I just feel like if we're trying to get to specifics, we are going to be here for a week.
I appreciate that. This is my first time, so thank you for that clarification. That makes all the difference.
Yeah, and I think just maybe adding, adding some language surrounding, you know, especially maybe under that D goal, if we're leaving that there, you know, on city, for possibilities on city or partner-owned properties, right? I mean, Arcata House has that property, and they want to use it. They're going to provide their services on a property that they have, whether it's in Valley West, whether it's downtown, whether it's in the bottoms or up Fickle Hill. I mean, if they have the property, they're going to want to provide services on it. So, but adding in, you know, there are city-owned properties, like you said, in Valley West, there's even more that you suggested doing things on, but there's also city-owned properties down here too, Little Lakes, et cetera. And so, just kind of thinking about, what do we own as a city? What can we use? What do our partner organizations own? And I think, perfect, just like that, you know, adding something like that in. Okay, so now that we've kind of refined our language on A through D, are there any projects that are not on here? I'm going to ask, right now, is it the time, there doesn't really seem to actually be a housing section, so is this the time to talk about housing things too that are not on here? Okay, well, I guess I'm already talking, so I'll continue talking. The one thing that I would want to see if other folks are receptive to adding, I know we kind of had a little, yeah, let's have staff talk about it moment at one of our meetings, but I have, Meredith and I met with Legal Services of Northern California, along with Karen, to just talk to a couple of their attorneys and kind of hear some ideas that they had surrounding tenant protections and rent stabilization. And so, they gave us some, you know, pretty good ideas, just looking at some easy things to get on the books, such as like a just cause ordinance for no-fault evictions, which is what a couple of our public commenters were talking about as well. And then, you know, maybe having them do a little bit of deeper research and work, looking into some of those, not so much rent cap, but rent stabilization, and just, you know, looking at the allowed percentages for raising rent and the timelines for that, et cetera. And so, they've kind of offered their services to be able to help us in this, and then eventually down the line, you know, there would be staff time, because they would bring some examples and stuff to staff to then kind of work into what would work for us. So, I wanted to bring that up and just see if there was council support for working with legal services before we have them go do a bunch of free work that isn't going to be used. And so, if folks are interested in pursuing and having, you know, legal services continue some of this work, and then eventually work with our staff to work on a just cause ordinance for no-fault evictions, and perhaps take a look at rent stabilization that way.
So, Sarah, you're talking about what Raylina proposed.
Yes.
And, okay.
I'm on board, absolutely, 100%.
I wish I wasn't such a good landlord.
Then you won't have anything to worry about, Alex.
I'm happy to discuss that.
Great, so, we'll add that one. Thank you, everybody.
Could I make a suggestion that you also broaden that, because it might be more than just legal services that we could do, you know, that we could work with, or it could be implied that legal services and other entities or something?
Yeah, legal services and other resources organizations, yeah, perfect.
So, I still, I still think about D, and that's cooperative housing. I, period, period, you know, I really worry about that. I think we should really be supporting Arcata House in this tiny house thing. Okay, that's my.
But why is that calling us not to support, no, no?
So, now we're going to go to Valley West improvements?
Well, does anybody have anything else they want to add to housing or homelessness services? Now is the time.
What about, Eureka has this program, and I know Stacy, you brought it up, about not being able to sleep in doorways in certain parts of your community. And I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, because that relates to homelessness, and that you need a place to go if you're not allowed to sleep there.
I would say that relates to a broader topic that I will be bringing up when we get to economic recovery.
There we go.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll table that one for economic recovery.
And I just wanted to bring up, before we leave this section, I do think that by July 1st, you know, most of our support for the Home Key 2 projects, beside what will be ongoing support for the next, you know, 20 years, will be completed. So, the big lift will be done there. I think that could come out of C, and you could make one that's really just around Arcata House Partnership for C, and remove and Home Key Projects.
One other thing that I want to add, and this kind of goes under the Cal Poly support too, but it also goes with our, working with legal services in Northern California. But to offer, and I would like to maybe see a partnership with like Equity Arcata, I brought this up when we were doing rental inspection ordinance, but to be able to provide some collaboration with the city, maybe through Equity Arcata, Cal Poly students, and maybe that like Cal Poly homeless group that I know some of us had spoken to, and like legal services to do some sort of like know-your-rights tenant programs, just because I know that was like a request that we heard from a lot of students, was, okay, the university isn't going to house us, so how is Arcata going to support us in being able to find housing, know our rights, get housing, you know, be part of the community? And so, I think, you know, that could go under housing, or it could go under Cal Poly collaboration, but I would like to see something like that, if at all possible.
Maybe Cal Poly collaboration, that seems to fit.
I saw two head nods and one seems to fit. Okay.
We can always put it in two categories, then when we complete it, we can cross two things off.
I like it. I like how you're thinking here. Okay, so we will move to Valley West improvements. So, Karen, if you want to give us an overview of what is in process and what is being completed, and then we can add to this list.
Sure, so we, the city through ARPA has funded two years of partnership with KUNA in the Valley West area, and we have funding for a third year of KUNA, including their monthly cleanup days. They did fruit tree planting, installed the barbecue and picnic area at Valley West Park. They completed murals on the Valley West Park basketball court, and multiple murals in the Valley West playground coming through. A lot of these came through that participatory budget. We have developed an MOU with Laurel Tree Charter School for city use of that space, and we will be using some of that indoor space for recreation programming out in the Valley West area. We hosted a pop-up summer basketball tournament, or we will be this summer, I think, last, past summer. And we've just tried to increase activities and events around Carlson Park, several events through KUNA, as well as the circus ended up being housed out in that area, and actually had one of their most successful circuses in Arcata that they've had. They actually were very pleased with the site. And then we've applied for a grant to support the development of a community center through CDBG, so we're still in that process right now. So, there has been some good work around that A. As you know, we also had the Farm and Ranch Carlson Park cleanup, and then we've got huge development coming to Carlson Park. So, Environmental Services has been able to secure really three different grants that will be funding the Valley West neighborhoods, done extensive community planning on what they'd like to see in that park, in that development, and we will hopefully be getting that out to bid before the end of the fiscal year to get some of that work started, so.
Do we possibly, and I apologize if you just said that, do we have an update for the CDBG grant, where we're at in that process? And it was like $250,000. I don't know if it's for a feasibility study, or what was it for?
We submitted on a, excuse me, a couple of different grants. The grant for the Planning and Technical Assistance was, you know, unfortunately filled out under a section that was open in the grant application process, but didn't, didn't end up meeting threshold requirements because that portion of the portal didn't allow us to complete the sections that would have allowed us to pass threshold. We've been working with our CDBG reps to try and resolve those issues for the future. And then we also applied for economic development funding, and that application is still under review. Typically, CDBG is, you know, a year out before you hear whether you've been awarded, and then oftentimes, you know, lately in the past several years anyway, it seems like they're a year out from grant award, so the CDBG applications are probably, you know, not for next fiscal year.
But is it for Valley West? I guess that's my question, because it says Valley West, and it says for development of a community center through the CDBG.
Yeah, the Planning and Technical Assistance Grant that we applied for, for CDBG for that was not, didn't pass threshold, so it's not going to make it in this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
So, I would like to, when we're talking about in Valley West and having a community center, and I was in contact with the Woodman's Hall, and I've met with the Woodman's Hall. They called me to come and look at their facility, and they were wondering if it would be eventually a facility that could work as a community center out in Valley West. And so I would like to put that on here as something to consider, is the Woodman's Center. I know you.
Where is that?
So, it's right there on, right across the street from Howland Park. We have done a tremendous amount of work identifying parcels, doing risk assessments through a PG&E grant for $25,000. We have identified two parcels. We are working with Laurel Tree, because they actually have leases on both those properties, and both of those properties do abut the city park. So, in my mind, I mean, I live out there, it makes more sense, although that Woodman's, it is vacant. Laurel Tree is moving out to Unhartwood in McKinleville, and so it looks like if things work timelines right, both of those properties will open up, and it sounds like one of the owners at least is amenable to possibly leasing that for a community center. So, just putting that we've done a tremendous amount of work identifying various parcels out there, and it piggybacks on what Cal Poly Humboldt did, a quite extensive study and research there, so.
Okay, I know that. I know that all happened, but still, I just wanted to bring up, you know, sometimes new things come up that we aren't expecting, and the Woodman's Hall is one of those, and they did have a nursery school there for a while, and so, and I actually toured it not long ago, and I'm thinking that we shouldn't take it off the table, and we should have to maybe evaluate everything when the opportunity comes.
Exactly. We're, as Stacy said before, we're not making any decisions right now. So, I think, you know, considering that center, and also that there are other currently identified parcels, is good wording for that. parcels is good wording for that.
Before, I just wanted to ask, because we have complete, and I was wondering if maybe we could consider continuing, because we have just began the conversation with the chamber. As everyone knows, the executive director was really excited to support the 70-plus businesses in Valley West as well as the Latinx businesses. She was bilingual, but now we are seeking a new ED. So we are like barely started the conversation, working and collaborating with the chamber. So I was hoping we could change that from complete to continue.
Yeah, or even just changing it and adding it, kind of, because those are all things that we have been working on through that partnership with KUNA as well, so just the continuation of the city's partnership with KUNA and the chamber and working on, you know, and Arcade House, working on, you know, beautification and improvement in Valley West.
Okay, it said complete, so that was, yeah. So we're still continuing with the chamber and all of these other collaborations.
Are we, or are we, is it complete? I have a thing about flower baskets because they're so hard to maintain and take care of, and they're really expensive to do, and it's on your list.
I think it's just trying to figure out, are there any specific improvements? Some of the specific improvements the council identified last year are complete. Certainly, the partnerships with the chamber and Main Street, Arcade House partnership will continue to develop and certainly can stay on, but if there are any specific improvements that you're really hoping to see us consider in this year's budget, this would be the time to share those.
So I would like to consider the flower baskets and the planters. I did go and spend some time with McKinleyville Chamber of Commerce and talked to them of how they have funded their baskets that they align on Central Avenue and the partnership that they did with Miller Farms, and I think that we could do the same kind of partnership with Mad River Gardens, which is also in Valley West, so it would be a win-win. They're not having to be upkeep because part of that of the contract, which is 300 per planter, which will last, if they get changed out quarterly, the upkeep is, upkeep is included in there. So it's all done, and it also doesn't have to cost the city. It can be self-supporting. We can solicit various businesses, just like they did in McKinleyville, to sponsor that particular basket. So we would change it out, you know, like in spring, something for the holidays. It would be on the Valley West Strip itself, right there, which, you know, it's often the first place that tourists and potential students and families see. So I would like to see that stay as a possible.
I just know how much work they are, and having experienced that in Oregon, actually, with a company that did them for Brookings and for another city, they said they finally had to give that up, it was so much work to do. So, and if they don't look good and you don't have someone maintaining them and watering them, they're going to look bad, and we don't want.
Been really successful in McKinleyville, and they have been able to maintain them and keep them up.
Okay, we don't need, okay, we don't need back and forth. Do people want to see some beautification efforts and some flower baskets? Perhaps as one of those maybe beautification efforts that we are not currently deciding on right now.
So a long, a long time ago, when we had a redevelopment agency, one of the ideas was to take, when you first came in on Valley West, is to be able to have a strip of landscaping that would be in the middle of the street, and that would just sort of soften things. We have a lot of changes with what's going on out there, but I just wanted to throw that out because I wrote it down.
I think that all falls into general beautification. Flower baskets or other landscaping, beautification, you know, whatever arises as a, as a great project.
Could, this probably does also come under there, so maybe it's being a little bit too micro. Susan Arnalas had started the idea of planting trees on Valley East, and we had talked about collaborating together. So would that still be under here? Absolutely, great, perfect, thank you.
So any, anything else then to add to the Valley West list here? Oh, okay, we're going to go through all of them, sorry. I thought we did, but we did not, because we moved into talking about the, the community center as well, we talked about that. Improvements to Carlson Park, and then, is that TV off?
No, like, have we gone through all of these? I still have some things to add on B.
Well, that's what I'm saying, now, now is the time.
Okay, absolutely, yeah, I'm ready. Okay, so I'm super excited on C, we have $2.5 million that we are doing on the total awards of those grants, so really excited. Looks like it's going to get started possibly as early as this summer. I am wanting to know if maybe the community might be able to see the designs. I've had people in Valley West ask if maybe, I know we might be in preliminary, so I just want to know, when could I share or tell them how they can get online and take a sneak peek to see what's coming?
That's great. So for Carlson Park, we are sharing the preliminary designs with the Parks and Rec Committee tomorrow night, so on Wednesday night, and that conversation will be recorded, and then planning to work with KUNA to share out more of those designs for the, the next, kind of next step as we then head into finalizing before we finalize to go to bid.
Thank you, that's perfect timing. Also, under safety, with 500 new residents coming in, three hotels, 100 each, right now, the Comfort Inn has 100, so we're going to have 300 students, and then with the two Home Key Projects, 150 to 180, we're about 480 to 500 new people coming on one city block. I'm wondering if we might consider a traffic study. Colin Fisk and CRTP did a really quite extensive review of transportation situation and how it needed more attention in March of 2022, and this was all before we knew that the students were coming. He talked about, CRTP published a report in 2020 called Elephants in the Road that had called for major changes in streets and roads in Humboldt County, and he talks about some of the ways that automobiles and towards people walking, biking, riding the bus, and addressing some of the historic inequities in the transportation system. And everybody knows that traditionally Valley West has been underserved and has fallen between the cracks. So I'm just wanting to know, I mean, I know transportation studies, traffic studies are quite costly, so I don't know what that would look like, but.
I, I think that.
Later on, it talks about that.
Yeah, it's already in the transportation, yeah, we have a whole transportation.
All right, and then, the roads, right, got it. So I guess doesn't need to be in two places. There was a 12% reduction in total incidents reported to APD in Valley West in 2022 compared to 2021, and I, because apparently people are paying attention, because I got several emails, and in response to that. And I was just wondering, do we have any way to do crime data analysis? They were asking if we could actually see the crime comparison by crime type, and then there was some concerns that I was asked to bring to the table. This is me speaking for the community, not myself. There were some recent concerns with the subterranean encampment that is behind Arcade House Partnership Facility, and then I know that there was, it's back. There was an encampment visible again from the Giantoli off-ramp right next to the fence. There's some encampments within 50 feet of the K through 12th grade outdoor school where there's no fencing, and the Valley East parked RVs are within 100 feet of Little Learners, and they tend to take up parking for the employees and also the apartments and the students that live on Valley East Boulevard. This person said three days in a row, they called the police for people trespassing and having dogs off-leash and in that vacant lot next to the Hampton Inn. I know at one point there were some tents, and that has been mitigated, but this person said that they would like to have some of the encampments addressed at Carlson Park weekly, months before we start the construction there for the summer, and she's not sure where these folks will go, but if there isn't a consistent presence, she said that there will, they will come back as soon as the truck leaves with their trash. So she wants to know if there's an alternative for these folks and relocating them when we go in and begin the work at Carlson Park. And she wanted to say kudos on the basketball tournament, they're looking for more pop-ups, so thank you for the attention on that. And, oh, over, yeah, she pointed out there are over 500 year-round residents in one block that's isolated from the rest of the city, from jobs, grocery stores, mechanics, and entertainment, et cetera, and then she said, thank you for doing this for her, so. Yeah, I know that was a lot. I promised that I would just bring her concerns to the table, so I think some of those would fit directly under safety, neighborhood priorities, trespassing, loitering, or narcotic activity, et cetera. And the lot that we're talking about, the 4781 on Valley East Boulevard, which is, I believe, the one that's below the Hampton Inn, looks like it is being regularly maintained, but just so you know, people are encroaching upon it again, so we might want to keep an eye on that, so.
I was going to ask a question. Has, has there been any interest still or any movement on, and this can be for the chief actually, probably, about having a police substation in Valley West? I know that there was some interest for it before, you guys were looking at some spots at Ray's, but I know service was bad and just staffing, obviously, but has there been, you know, any more talk about that or desire to do that? And I know that might be something that folks want to see or maybe coordinating with UPD on patrol of that area as well.
Yes, ma'am. We've done a lot of research and we identified a few properties, but we weren't able to finalize anything due to infrastructure issues with radio communication, but with the Cal Poly utilizing Comfort Inn, they have made a room available to both UPD and APD to utilize as a satellite office. So that is available, but we still are, you know, with the, the challenge of staffing, so, but it is nice to have that resource there.
And so I would, oh, yeah, thank you. I would just maybe, if, if folks are amenable to this, add something under D, under that public safety, you know, thing, just about, you know, having a coordination between APD and UPD to help patrol that area when possible.
And I don't know if this is a possibility, but there is a lot of space at West Village, which formerly was the Red Roof Inn. I know that they're not converting the entire conference room, they had that huge parking lot, so that might be another possibility if the Comfort Inn isn't big enough. I attended at REDAC recently their board meeting, and the Cal Poly liaison, not liaison, the person that was heading up and giving us the physical updates did mention that UPD is going to be there, so hopefully that will fill in the gap until we can get more people hired at APD.
Okay. Anything else that folks want to discuss about Valley West improvements? All right.
Valley Best.
Valley Best improvements. Okay, that will take us then to number three. If you want to go through A and B there and give us the overview, Karen, and then we'll keep going.
Yeah, sure. This is an area that we will continue to collaborate with the county on mental health and social services. It's not an area that we have any prime budget for in Arcade, other than ARPA funds that will continue to fund the mobile intervention services teams that do clinical outreach with, within the police department, they respond to 911 calls, and, and they do their own sort of proactive work in the city. They do have good connections with county social services, and they have, as they grow in their program, are a more critical link to getting people to services. And, you know, mid-year, I think we've, well, we've also coordinated with community ambassadors along this line, and we really have the outreach sergeant position that is been in close contact with all of our service providers in the region and trying to collaborate for, you know, mental health and social services, but we're really limited in, in dollars to put towards this, even in staff effort to be able to, to create and collaborate other than really our homeless services working group. And then we do participate in, in sort of the crisis intervention team that meets the police department response, or meets with that group monthly too, which is more case management on individuals in the community that need immediate help.
So could I ask a question? I know we just talked about funding, so this is probably not a good time to ask, but I'm just wondering where we might be at it expanding the MIST program 24 hours? I know that it's during the weekdays, my understanding, and they go home at 5:00, and trying to, you know, navigate when mental health issues often happen in the evening or on the weekends, and then also, we don't really have anything, and I might be mistaken, to fill in the gap for adolescent youth, some of the older teenagers, you know, when they're having a mental health issue, your only option at this point is, because the county's closed, is to call APD, and to have, you know, an officer, law enforcement officer coming out there in response to a mental health issue seems probably pretty daunting for the young person, and I'm just hoping that we can, I don't, I guess MIST is only for adults? Is that correct?
No, MIST can respond to anyone in crisis.
Okay, okay, because I've been hearing from the community that they would like to see something for adolescent youth, so I'm happy to hear that that is something that can be expanded or is addressing the adolescent youth, but we just don't have funding to do any more than just, you know, the regular working week hours. Is that how that was? You're like four days a week?
Correct, four days a week, about six hours a day. MIST clinicians and other behavioral health clinicians are on call, so if we have a crisis after hours around the weekends, then we can always call them.
Okay.
But also getting additional staffing is dependent a lot on DHHS's ability to hire those positions, so it's, it's a complex process that is dependent upon other factors as well to get additional staffing.
I think Stacy had something to add on that topic as well.
Just as it was stated with our, with the budget that we have, I think we, we have a lot, we have plenty of big goals on here, and so, and we also have the idea of the sales tax increase possibly, which could, that's what we're looking at, to expand the community ambassador program. That could be, we could discuss that for a lot of these things, but I think until we have that extra money, that we shouldn't necessarily get too specific in what we want to do until we have a funding source.
Just to piggyback on the ambassador program, we're just beginning conversation with Arcade House Partnership and the Chamber of Commerce, myself, KUNA, as well as two community members, and we're searching for grants to see if maybe we could, the idea would be to hire folks with lived experience from The Grove, two people, and then one person to help coordinate it, and doing something very similar, hopefully exactly the same, just, you know, rather than recreate the wheel, but just, there's just so much need out there. So there are some smaller grants that might be able to just do, even if it's just a couple days a week, you know, bare bones, just to get something going out there, so I'll keep you updated on how that's moving forward.
Support and expand to these programs, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to go back, so I'm hearing that maybe we remove item three for this year? The mental health and social, I mean, just in terms of where we're prioritizing our staff time? I mean, we're going to keep, Community Ambassador actually has its own, it's listed in here twice.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to move, you know, some of these up to, to one, basically, but I mean, I think, you know, these are, these are things that we are continuing to do. We're looking for ongoing funding sources for MIST, for Community Ambassador. I know that Community Ambassador is mentioned later in the goals too, but, you know, these, these are pretty broad, non-specific ideological things that, that we do and that we work on, and we look for, for money, and we use, you know, these, these employees and that work for MIST and Community Ambassador to do, you know, great things, and we support them, and always are looking to expand these programs when possible, so, I don't know, if we, like Stacy said, if we want to take things off to, to check them off, but this is something that I think we're always doing, so.
Did you say remove it? I missed out, I guess. What, what was the?
No, keep it, because it's what we're, it's an ongoing.
Okay, okay, so we will continue to seek out long-term funding strategies, et cetera, thanks.
Yeah. Okay, great. Anything else under, under three? Anybody has comments on? All right, we're going to move to infrastructure then, to number four.
Could I ask one more question? Sorry. I was, I know we're doing a quarterly update to the city. Is it possible to get some statistics in there, if possible, when we do some of the MIST kinds of things, to see a little bit more of when people are dispatched, what the criteria was, what was the resolution, if there was? What was the resolution, if there was any, um so that we can see how the MIST program is working?
Well, that's a lot of documentation for staff to have to do, you know. For one thing, is be able to say, we we went out and we saw so-and-so for two hours and this happened, and we got them this and that. It's a lot of work. Instead of just being able to, I don't know, I could be wrong about that.
Yeah, we'll get the report and we'll see if it satisfies what the council's interest is, but we are working.
We have it generalized, but not so specific.
Yeah, they're already, yeah, creating those reports anyway. It's part of, I'm sure they're they're daily logging that they have to do anyway. So um great. Back to infrastructure, number four.
Uh okay, so we've got um quite a bit of progress on Eighth and Ninth Street. A is really around Eighth and Ninth Street, one ways uh between I and K. Uh I think we will need another year, so I would suggest some sort of, you know, continue uh Eighth and Ninth Street project. But the council has approved some preliminary designs. And um overall, our annual capital improvement program, I think this has been a sort of a catch-all. You'll go through the capital improvement program list as you go through budget. Uh Eighth Street, I don't know if Emily, you want to talk a little bit just about the call for artists that we'll have going out on this and other areas?
Great. So for four C, um currently, we have a survey out in the community to get community input on what kind of connectivity can um mean uh means for community members and to get some theme ideas for what could be represented in a call for art in the downtown and Eighth and Ninth Street area. Um so we envision a call for public art, for visual art, um on fire hydrants and other city infrastructure like the two planters um on Eighth Street, and anticipate that going out this spring for implementation during this year's dry season. Um and then uh another goal is for implementing the strategic arts plan, so just to make that connection that they're they're related.
So I have a request. Those two concrete pipes that we have in the street is actually getting them removed off of Eighth Street and not making them art symbol or things. Somebody painted one pink and um they they were all, it was an idea when all the streets were changing and we were making the church, you came in one lane, lane this way, you could move straight this way, just so people got used to it. But I would think that most people are used to what you have to do when you go on Eighth Street now and where you can turn and where you can't. And um Shane Britton came up with that idea and um I just don't think they're needed. If you, one obstacle, we have enough obstacles on all these corners that are coming out into the street and trying not to drive over them. I was taught, drive close to your curb. Now I just drive over those things that we've been putting in all over the city. But I'd like, I don't drive over those concrete block and pipes because I would ruin my car. But um I just don't think they're necessary. I'd like to see them gone.
Um, I don't know. I'd like, I like planters. I like painted things. Uh removing them seems hard.
Well, they aren't exactly planters. They're great big concrete things and somebody has to take care of them and a business has to take care of them and things have died in them and.
Yeah, I know for a fact that a lot of businesses on Eighth Street do not like the planters, so. But, yeah.
I would say they work. They are doing their job. They are calming traffic. So I would say they should be there. If you want to modify it or make it an art, definitely we could work on it. But they are doing their job as a traffic calming and narrowing the road and helping people walk.
Alex just wants to go whipping down Eighth Street, I think. She wants, she wants the traffic.
To not be calm, no, I'm just kidding.
Not really. If I had my way, I would have a golf cart. And that's how I would get around. But they aren't considered legal in Arcata on city streets or in any city streets.
Would you like to add that to goals? Just kidding.
No, I know it's not legal, so no. But um I just have, I've always found them a nuisance, but since you love them, okay.
You've committed to that now, I'm not sure. You love them. So, oh, sorry. No, go ahead. No, go ahead, Meredith. Yeah. No, you get to start this time. There you go. I'm the teacher. I'm picking you. Three, three before me. That's.
Um so I don't know where to add this. Maybe it's infrastructure, maybe it's climate change, maybe it's economic recovery. But I'm gonna throw it out now because I've heard a lot of feedback um at the planning meetings um that we had with the committees. Um but as long as we're talking about transportation around the plaza and um some plaza improvement, I would really like to um work with Main Street and the farmer's market and try to close the plaza to traffic during farmer's market.
Yes, that goes with Eighth, Eighth and Ninth Street. That was on my list to add there too. So I'm I'm fully, and and that was a Plaza Improvement Task Force idea as well, so it goes.
Is that the right place for it?
Continuing those recommendations. Or economic recovery. Yeah, I don't know where that goes, but I think all of us kind of like that idea.
Yeah, concur, absolutely.
Wherever you think that one should go.
Uh could I add something to that? Um I'm thinking of people who are disabled, so we're gonna close that off. Perhaps if we can make some kind of agreement with Cal Poly Humboldt at the bookstore there that if you have a state placard with a disability placard that you could be.
Broad.
Okay, okay. Um so I, this may go under infrastructure um or not, I don't know. Um I'm thinking of the overpass. Um as you go to Cal Poly Humboldt by Fair Winds, um we're in North Town. Um it's looking or can look pretty shabby and was thinking that call for art. Okay, we don't need it in two pots.
Yes, oh, footbridge, economic recovery, yeah. Okay, anything else to add to infrastructure? Or um I see, we didn't really talk about community ambassador on 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 this one. Is that gonna? I know that we have now established it, but we will obviously continue supporting it and looking for funding for community ambassadors. So happy to leave that there.
Such a successful program. Thank you, um Stacy. That that was really a great addition. Super successful.
So we'll leave it. Um great. Let's move to economic recovery strategies because we're all just raring to get there. Um, yeah, number five.
Well, I know the ambassador program has been keeping the footbridge clean and that the, in Valley, in what North Town, a lot of the garbage dumpsters are not locked. So people are able to take things out of them or take the garbage bags up to the footbridge, sort through them, take what they want and leave what they don't want. And so part of that footbridge would be figuring out how to have people lock their garbage bins in North Town, which might help with the amount of garbage that ends up there for the footbridge anyway.
Yeah, I'd say, you know, keep the Hsu footbridge on for another year. There was a group that was really actively working with Playhouse Arts and the Public Safety Committee. Um I think that's been transitioned more recently to Jim Woolgram up at Cal Poly Humboldt. Uh and so I think that if we give them one more year, you did set aside a little bit of ARPA funds to support beautification along the footbridge. And we'll see if they can't come up with, you know, a a plan to bring forth to the council to utilize those funds this year.
One thing, when you look at the footbridge, it's much bigger than you think. If you stand at one end and you walk all the way across it and then you thought about pa- painting a design on it or something, very, very long.
Okay, great. Happy to keep that one. Um the next one there, the um Economic Development Strategic Plan. Um David gave me a good explanation of maybe how we could tweak this one the other day. And I thought what you said was really, made a lot of sense um about maybe, you know, just taking elements of this plan back to the EDC and maybe not overhauling the whole plan. Um but do you want to touch on that a little bit, David?
Um sure. The um Economic Development Strategic Plan um is, was last updated in two thousand nine. Um and so I think there was a motivation to want to try and update that plan again. So what I was thinking was for this, instead of committing to a full update, um you know, maybe having a uh some time set aside during a study session, uh maybe an annual uh meeting with the planning commission or sometime like that, we can figure out when it makes the most sense to do so. But we could just read through the document together and kind of try and figure out, you know, what portions of it, you know, seem still, I mean, I'm not suggesting line by line, but look through the document together to see what parts still seem, you know, fresh and and um, you know, and relevant. Um and then sort of strategize from there, what, you know, what next steps to take? Might be a better use of our efforts to, uh you know, create some sort of a, you know, a marketing plan to try and emphasize one of the the goal areas within that strategic plan as opposed to just updating the plan again. Um the plan was originally part, part, one of the main purposes for the plan was to uh, it was used with the redevelopment agency as sort of a project pipeline. So we were always continually looking for, you know, the next planning phase or the next project phase to build out um and support our our economic development growth now that we don't have those, um you know, those dollars, those redevelopment dollars to actually do the projects. Um, you know, just updating that plan and getting another, you know, document that sits on the shelf that tells us, you know, what areas we should be, um you know, concentrating on may not be the the best uh impact.
Do you think that's something that the EDC could do and then bring to us? I mean, I feel like there's some really brilliant people on that committee that are sometimes really underutilized. And um I I think that we could even task them with picking some things out to bring to us.
I I definitely think there are some projects uh in the document that the EDC members could break off and work on. Um, you know, frankly, the the background data that supported that document is probably a lot more technical than uh the committee members would be willing to uh pu- put their energy into uh on a volunteer basis. Um and I think that if we were, if we did decide, hey, we want to update this plan or we want to, you know, develop some, you know, marketing, you know, strategy around one of the, you know, areas, as I suggested just a minute ago, that's probably something we're gonna want to put some money behind and and hire consultants to to help us with.
That's great. Fantastic. But I, yeah, I totally support what you put up there. And just to be able to, you know, before we commit to hiring consultants and paying people money to use our our hive mind between us and the the commission um to to really just prioritize, yeah, what to spend money on and probably not spend as much. Um yeah, go ahead, Alex.
So one thing I've been asked by some um businesses is uh they're concerned about our economy and how it's going to fare, especially since the cannabis industry has gone belly up. And they're wondering if they, how much investment they should put into their businesses or into the property that they're now renting. And so I'm just wondering if there's any way that that could be looked at by the Economic Development Committee? And if there's any trends out there, if there's any information?
Um, you know, I I certainly think that's a a topic that they can um discuss.
All right, item C on this list, the Economic Recovery Collaborative, um was something that I think really just because both the Chamber and Main Street have strong liaisons from this council. Uh we saw sort of fewer and fewer attendees as, you know, we were coming out of the pandemic. And so the council did not um reassign liaisons to this. I think you can remove C.
And then I did have a question about D. I mean, how how much is this this Visit Arcata website used? Is that the best uh marketing outlet for us? Are we putting money towards that? Um so.
Um I think the website is good. Uh I mean, I think the the visitarcata.com um owning that webpage is good. I think the website itself uh could use some revitalization. The hope was to work with Main Street and the Chamber this year. Uh and so once they do solidify, yeah, once they do solidify staff for those positions, then then we will start to work with them to update that page. We've really launched the Instagram for visitarcata.com and that is getting more and more traction.
I think there's even more people. I think that um Humboldt May has been doing a really wonderful job working with local communities and um North Coast Goers Association. Um I think they'd also be a wonderful um place to partner with them on their board.
Yeah, I I would just maybe add then to D. I'm I'm happy to continue that and keep it. Um just add to to collaborate with Main Street and other local tourism organizations.
So to piggyback on your hive mind, I'm wondering with this untapped resource at Cal Poly Humboldt, maybe one of the marketing programs or business programs could turn it into a senior project or something in their masters, the MBA project and um, you know, would be helping them and it would help us. Is that something we might consider bringing them on board?
Um yeah, we certainly can look to that. I mean, I'll I'll just say that we had uh actually hired the Chamber for a period of time to try to manage that. We just haven't had staff capacity to even bring on an intern to do that work. Uh so we do quick updates as we can internally, but finding a partner that would help coordinate that kind of work is, I think, gonna be important next year.
And it also takes uh management of whoever it is that's doing that. But right now, I I feel like on Instagram, we have a lot of good postings for uh Visit Arcata and that you're, you know, you're doing a good job on putting that out. And um I noticed, uh it was sent by Julie Fulker, so they sent me the Eureka Cities Newsletter. And I guess they put that out four times a year. And um I don't know if we'd want to do some kind of an annual thing, like the end of a physical year or something, because you did a really good report about all the things that we have accomplished within that year, within a year. And maybe that's how we could look at our newsletter, would be our accomplishments and what we've uh done. Um anyway.
And we will, while we do the yearly and uh in what, two weeks, uh Karen and Stacy, I believe, will be doing the the State of the City address with, you know, the Chamber and Cal Poly and other, you know, local folks. So that, it's an in-person thing, but they record it, right? You can watch it later, can you? Yeah. So that's kind of like our our newsletter, I guess. Okay, um so we discussed and edited those and I know um I I heard Stacy say economic recovery strategy earlier. So let's uh start down at this end if anybody has anything to add.
So I think what I'm going to suggest, first of all, it's not gonna be an easy um conversation. And I'm really, I really uh recommend that we keep it high level and we do not go into the weeds on this. Um but it also touches several of the categories, but I just picked this one because I'm kind of speaking out on behalf of business owners um in our community, amongst other things. But um I'll just throw it out there and I'll give you guys some follow-up. But I I think that um I have been in discussions with um Chief Ahern for the past couple of years and with the city manager, just kind of what-if-ing and looking into the possibility of some type of uh of an ordinance um regarding camping in certain places in our city. And um so I would, I'm, you know, wanting to know if there are, if there's enough interest to continue that forward to a discussion. When we had our meeting with the committee chairs, um almost every group brought up an issue with unauthorized camping, um whether it was environmentally sensitive areas, the marsh, streams, creeks, parks, transit. Um it was brought up tonight, schools, which I added, that was a uh something I hadn't even thought of, um as well as a couple of the business districts. And um we would definitely have to have a couple of things in place to make that happen. Some beds available in the evenings for folks um who are, who might be in those spaces and, you know, offered to go somewhere else. Um so that's the overview. And I'm just wondering if there is enough interest to push it forward.
I would support that, Stacy.
Well, Eureka's done something similar to that and I I think we could look at what they have done. And um it's really important, um when we have um, well, um it's it's, I noticed the police go down and they say it's time to get up and move on in the doorways downtown before the business is open. And it's a hard situation for shoppers. And we know that we live off a sales tax. That's one of our funding sources. And it's really important for us to make sure that we're going to be able to have as much sales tax as we possibly can. And so I definitely support this effort.
Okay, there's your three out of five. Um I have mixed feelings about this one, but I am happy to bring it to session and discuss it publicly with everybody. I think there are a lot of aspects to be discussed with it that, you know, um to be worked out. And I'm I'm happy to at least have it on an agenda and hear what all my colleagues have to say about it, so.
Um, thank you. I concur.
All right, so in that teeny, teeny, tiny writing, no.
And I'm gonna add one. I'm gonna, I'm gonna add something else.
I'm gonna add.
Literally, it's the smallest.
I'm gonna add something else, if I can, to the economic recovery strategies. Um I think this probably fits into like public safety, but I don't see a category for that. Um, you know, we were talking with Chief Ahern and I think, uh I just, you know, hear a lot about, you know, not enough officers to, you know, catch people speeding or answer all sorts of calls. all sorts of calls. And I, I think that recruitment is a big problem and I would also like to look away to support the police department in finding ways to help them, oh my God, what's the word? Recruit. Maybe look into hiring bonuses or other methods that we can do to, there's been empty positions for so long. You know, if we want to have satellites in Valley West and, and have people out there, if we want to, you know, pretty much everything we want to do, we need a full police force. And I think we need to support them and help them add some more positions.
Thank you for bringing that up. You read my mind. We're eight officers down and we are in jeopardy of even losing our detective. So whatever we can do to support Chief Ahern in recruitment process, I don't know what that would look like. I know these things cost money, but yeah, status quo is not working. We need to have a fully staffed police force.
And that's on the police priorities for the, well, for the staff to us goals. No, no, it's on the, the other later list, which we actually might not get to the whole you guys telling us everything about your department's part, but I read it.
So can I ask a quick question about the list? Because I missed something because I had it at the other part of the, we had four documents. So is there any way to add something to Valley West at a different time or just blurt it out? Flashing sidewalk, crosswalk, we need one desperately.
Yeah, and we can look at that. There's, there's a bunch of, you know, transportation projects too and, and the roads that need stuff, this whole streets list and so Gentoli to Valley West.
I just wasn't sure when to pop that in.
So I have something totally different. I wanted, one thing I'd love to have APD and Cal Poly, you know, have one police force and not two in Arcata. But I understand that the university system is not really liking that idea. But I would like to see what we could do about dispatch. So we have dispatch in all, basically our cities, the county, and what would happen if we would just come up with one dispatch for our county? And would that help out having to always have so many dispatchers, et cetera, et cetera? And I remember in the old days, if somebody, we have a bathroom now, but in the old days if someone really had to go to the bathroom, an officer would have to come in and be in dispatch so they could go to the bathroom and then come back and continue. So that took quite a while to get a bathroom for dispatch downstairs, but it's really a nice one. But I'm wondering if we can look at dispatch countywide. It, I don't know where it goes, but it's economic recovery strategies. If we could do that, maybe it would save us some money and we could put it somewhere else. Thank you.
I just wanted to echo that I absolutely support doing what we need to do to fully staff and support our police, so thank you.
All right. Is that going to be in tiny, little bitty letters too?
Well, I think we've got, we only have one council member at this point, so I need to know if there's at least three council members that want to talk about.
Oh, I'm the only one that's interested in coordinating dispatch.
And that's more of a coordination too with the county, so they have to be open to it too, but if they want to pick us up and talk about it.
But we have to start, the conversation has to start from somewhere. So we'd have to start the conversation to see if it's a possibility.
Yeah, several years ago, Measure Z did fund a study and, and we can get that back out and take a look at it. It's, it's a, it's a sensitive topic within law enforcement agencies. It's probably easier for me to speak to it than, than the chief to speak to it in terms of, I think most police departments get pretty protective over their dispatchers. They want to take good care of them. Their dispatchers take really good care of officers that are on the street in very dangerous situations, so. But, but every department is chronically understaffed and has vacancies in dispatch as well. So it could be a very good regional conversation to have.
And I'm open to having that conversation with the guidance and, and support of our, of our department. So I would want to definitely consult with the chief prior to those conversations.
Yep. Here, here.
So I guess I'm gonna be the odd person out. I don't know, I don't want it centralized. I used to do dispatch, I'm gonna age myself a million years ago in Reading, and I think that what we're doing right now is working and if it's not broken, let's not fix it.
Well, I look at it from a cost-effective point of view and if that, if, and I would like to have it explored, so.
Yes, we have it on the list and I think that we had four people out of five say that that sounds like something to at least discuss and, and take a look at with the guidance of our own police department and if that's something they are comfortable with moving forward on as well. Okay. Economic recovery, last call. All right. Prioritizing future planning. Oh, look, there's only one thing. Ah, I know, it's a really big one. Okay, let's get an overview on that.
So, so I, you know, I, I have a couple of regional, well, a couple of concepts. Where would we put in future planning for, for Little Lake and for Happy Valley? Where would that go in here?
I'm fine for you just to get all of your goals out on the table and if there's agreement that we should put them in the document, I'm happy to try to re-categorize these. These categories really came out of focus groups that this council held two years ago and they maybe don't fit your current goals. So if, if the council is willing to, I'm happy to try to just regroup, just get everything out there that you'd like to see included and then it will come back to you.
I'm fine regrouping as long as we're keeping it high level.
Okay, so, so while I'm interested in Happy Valley because that was something during the redevelopment years that was purchased and it was considered for industrial or development, economic development, and we still own the property. And I'm thinking with the Gateway Plan and as it moves forward, there may be people that would like to move their business to another place and that could happen at Happy Valley if we move forward in Happy Valley and so forth. Because in the seventies, we knew there was a drastic need for an industrial park and that is how Alder Grove Industrial Park came around. We knew there weren't any industrial parks anywhere else in the county and was a very difficult situation. So at that time, the city council made a decision to move forward on acquiring property for an industrial park and it was very successful in those days. And I think the Happy Valley is another concept and we need to move that forward. And also Little Lake is talked about for a dog park and this and that. We should really have a discussion about what is the economic, best economic development project for that? And that's why I would think if, it may not happen this year, it may have to go next year or the year after, but we should definitely put those on to our goals.
Yeah, I'm happy to add those. Those, that is future planning, those are properties we own, it sounds apt. Thank you, Alex. And then our big major one just under here is working on Strategic Gimmelfell Gateway, general plan updates. That obviously is a process we are still currently in as we just had an update at our last council meeting.
And I would suggest that you just write, complete general plan updates, including the Gateway Plan.
I have one other thing that I've been requesting, I'm just gonna bring it up, is that a green burial site, it could be a, it could be a municipal green burial site. And I don't know if there's any interest in this, but it's, I've been talked to numerous times about it over the years and I thought I would just bring it forward and see if it's something we even want to think about.
That is an interesting concept. I know that there's quite a few local, well, one major local agency that is doing work on that. So I don't know if they have a spot identified in Arcata. I know that they do a lot of green burials out of Blue Lake, but I don't know. I feel like if that organization came to us and wanted to say, hey, we want to do green burials in Arcata, let's do them, so.
Well, I have had that request, but I said I would bring it up at Goals because somewhere we, you know, we'd never talk about it if we don't have it in Goals, is my guess. And depending on how it was structured, it could be a income source for Arcata.
Sounds intriguing. I'd like to talk about it. That sounds cool. Yeah, I guess, future planning? Any, anything under future planning that is non-Gateway related that we want to add? Okay, I know myself, I am ready to take maybe a quick, like, five-minute break and I know others need that as well. So we actually are, there's 14 numbers on this list and we're at number seven, so we are, and I think the second half is a little more slim, so we're about halfway through this list. So we'll take a quick five-minute break and we will be back. the Arcata Arts Strategic Plan by working with existing arts efforts established in the community. And so this one is marked completed slash continue, so let's get a little update.
Yeah, one of the priority projects for this fiscal year was an honor mural honoring David Josiah Lawson. That mural is in design phase, working with the family. It will go on the north side of the D Street Neighborhood Center. This weather is not helping get that mural up quickly, but we do hope to have something that's visible or in, at least starting by the sixth anniversary date of April 15th, the family will be in town. So I do really suspect by June 30th that that mural will be complete and A can, can come off the list around, around that. So we will, I mean, we've got a lot of other arts, we've got the call for artists, so we could move that, you know, or as I reorder, you know, we might have beautification and arts in one category and we can put the ones that you have in here that support the strategic arts and cultural plan.
Yeah, just happy with continuing the implementation of that plan.
So does that include the two boxes down on G Street, on Samoa Bowl of our G and H?
The goal does. The initial call for artists will have to wait until we get the permit from Caltrans to add that into our.
I just wanted to make sure those are included. Thank you.
And, and I apologize, apparently I'm fading fast. You just said something and maybe it didn't compute, but it says implement existing efforts. Is there a place later that we can bring in something that's not existing? I don't see Valley West at all in the strategic arts program.
Didn't we cover some of that in the beginning under Valley West with Kuna and marketing?
Well, for example, the basketball court mural and the murals, I mean, we're, I mean, I would say that, you know, that also fell under the arts and cultural strategic plan, like getting arts out into our community. So any of that beautification would be supporting the arts plan.
So those are completed, so I guess I was just wondering like.
Yeah, if you have a specific goal you'd like to see for Valley West, you should share it.
Okay. I, I would like to see some more art in Valley West, whatever that might look like in sculptures or any, any kind of beautification. I just know when I was talking to Gillen about the strategic arts plan, when it was being crafted, we weren't in there and she said, well, we can do that later and now it's later.
Isn't the strategic arts plan, isn't part of the reason that we shifted it and made it our local arts agency to make sure that this, it would be equitable, equitable across the city so that there, you know, so that all areas of the city were focused on and, and there would be a call to artists in an equitable way? Is that, is my understanding?
Yeah, sure. The Arcata, you know, strategic arts plan really set the framework for, and David can add more here, but of how potential art, artists can approach the city, the types of art and collaborations are looking for, and then really setting the, the framework for how artists can, can apply. Separately, but related, at last year's budget timeframe, the council allocated ARPA funding for the G and H Street Green and Gold Corridor and that included funding for public art in the downtown area on G and H and then also through the IIG Infra- And then also through the IIG infrastructure and infill grant, there's money for public art along Eighth and Ninth concurrent with the Eighth and Ninth Street project. So the funding that the city has for the first call for art are focused in those areas as that's where we have budget has been allocated. And so in the the council could choose to, you know, allocate additional funds in the future for other locations concurrently. You know, Environmental Services is looking for other grant sources for beautification efforts. And that could have funding for other locations in the city for public art.
But I'll just add the arts plan covers the whole city, including Valley West.
Okay, there's nothing in there specific, but we're going to be working that out through the year. And if it doesn't happen and get put in now, it still can, is what you're saying?
No, I mean, I think again, if there's a specific project that you hope to see, that it should be in your priority projects. I'm saying that just the strategic art plant is kind of global to the whole city. The policies that are contained within that would be throughout the whole city.
So when you say in the party, you're saying item number seven, it's now or never because.
So is there a specific project that you want to talk about?
I just want to see art in Valley West. And because I'm brand new at this, I I really wasn't sure of the protocol. Otherwise, I would have come prepared with a specific proposal. So, yeah.
Yeah, well, I think we have back in under number two to continue, you know, beautification efforts. I think murals and art art go under that. I know there's been talk about doing, you know, murals on the back of the the Rays kind of shopping center building. But I know there was, I think, some resistance from the property owner. So, you know, continuing beautification and seeking out those partnerships. Yeah.
And can't some some of those beautification things be added to the big, the huge grant that the Valley West got?
So that particular grant did get some participatory budget. But what I'm hearing from the community is they're wanting a garden, which is not art. So they get to decide by voting what they want. They may or may not, you know, because it's we we just have limited funds. And it has to stretch, you know, we, yeah, we have to make that stretch for everything out there. So the first time we wanted garbage cans and recycling, and we wanted to have some fruit trees and we wanted to. So so I guess if we don't ask for it now, I'm thinking that it's not going to be in the budget, correct?
Yeah.
Right. And I I I've been remiss in the neighborhood because I knew and I didn't realize that I should have brought a proposal to the table.
I don't, I think you've done an excellent job advocating for Valley West. I don't think you've been remiss at all. So, I mean, there's no other, I mean, well, we do have some stuff focused on the Plaza. So we have some Plaza specific stuff and we have Valley West specific stuff. But we don't have other areas of the city covered. So we need to think holistically about the entire city of Arcata.
Okay, I I do have something that actually now that because I'm on the spot and I was like, oh, no, oh, no. I was thinking about the G and the the green and gold. We're going to have a huge amount of students out in Valley West, and we don't want them to feel left out. We want them to be recognized. Maybe we can do something on a very small scale, similar to the green and gold up on G and H Street that you were doing, maybe on Valley West.
Maybe they'll all just live on the ship.
That's going to be under eleven. We're there, yeah.
They might all just live on the barge and we won't, we'll still get our.
Flotel.
T money coming in from Valley West.
I I got the update from Cal Poly and they said that it is definitive that they're going to be moving students into the motel.
No, no, I I know that's going to happen, but you know, I just thought it for advantage for us.
So for time's sake, folks, we're going to get moving. We we added, I saw Dana added art under our list of kind of prioritized beautifications that we might want to see in Valley West. Adding art to that list does no harm and hopefully we can work it out along with these other beautification projects. So just in the sense of time and keeping it high level, I think it is. And and that point that you just made, I think will be a good one to add number under number eleven when we talk about the Green and Gold Corridor and the Cal Poly partnerships. So with this, now let's move to climate change and adaptation. Karen, if you want to just take us through a quick tour of this list of items.
All right, we'll just keep this pretty high level. SP thirteen eighty-three, we're going through that implementation right now. I do think that that'll be a big body for of work for staff next fiscal year. I don't know if it needs to be in your goals, per se, as state regulation, just know that it will it will be prevalent when we get into the budget process. The all-electric ordinance, we do expect to have that before you by the end of this fiscal year. We should be in implementation of that for next fiscal year if you want to continue it. But again, once you adopt it this fiscal year, I don't know if you need to keep it in your goals. I think you could remove A and B. Finalize adoption, begin the implementation of the Climate Action Plan. I don't know if there's anything specific in that, Emily, that you think we should pull out for this fiscal year or David. But I would suggest that you probably keep that one in in terms of kind of finalizing the regional effort there. We did set aside the climate change funds for your ARPA projects, and that will come back before you to, you know, as we review ARPA and the budget process. So I do think that you can remove D because you did implement that in your budget process. I do think that we should continue to update the city's green fleet. It is a really, really challenging time to get vehicles, period, and we do have some really aging vehicles. So we're struggling with that policy, but I think it would also be good for us to update it and see if we can get some goals on the books to be looking at that long term. And then certainly we'll continue sea level rise adaptation planning. So I would keep F.
Can I ask a question? Oh, I guess we have G still too.
And then G, yeah, we have been working with the county. They are working on a regional ordinance to reduce impacts of tobacco. And we are going to incorporate all that together and have it be one ordinance that would be more countywide with the cities of Eureka, potentially Eureka and here in Arcata. So I, you know, I would keep that on for right now until we can get that before you, if it's still a priority of the council.
I'd like to comment on item G. I would really, I support this. I was a tobacco educator and a program coordinator for North Coast Tobacco Education Project with St. Joseph Health System for more than five years. So considering a ban on the sale of disposable vaporizers, yeah, I'm hoping that we can keep that there.
So my, how does that, though, loop into what the state just did? Because we voted to at least get rid of flavored ones, but I know that kind of one of the main concerns, which I would want to take. I, oh, I guess it does say disposable vaporizers, yeah, beyond tobacco, because my my more concern is about batteries that are disposable and get thrown in the landfill and don't get recycled and don't, you know, get anything done with them. And so that's my greater concern. And I think that's why it's under climate change, because it has to do more with the batteries. But so I don't know, that was, I guess, more of amusing than a question. But but like, it sounds like the county is working on that, and that's a coordinated effort, and that's great to continue doing. I had a question, or maybe just in addition to C about the Climate Action Plan. I know I had spoken to some folks from Humble Area Foundation and also just some some other local climate groups that just to maybe add something to like support, because because they were talking about hopefully that cities are going to be able to work through grant money to be able to hire local staff to help be able to implement the cap. And I don't know, you know, how far those conversations are, but, you know, just being able to work with those regional partners to make sure that we have staff to be able to implement the cap. And Emily Benve is coming up to answer my question.
Sure. So we, just for a little bit of background for council members, we meet monthly as a Climate Action Plan work group on the staff level. Part of that is to work through the process of the cap itself and moving that all forward. And then we also have had several discussions about how to fund staffing in an ongoing manner. And so part of that is looking at grant applications. We've put in a couple at least in the last couple of months, led by the City of Eureka, RCEA and the county. So we can continue to look at those opportunities.
Great. Then we're already doing it, and that's all part of the implementation process. So thank you.
I ask a quick question about A, because I thought, do we need to set any money aside to for the city of Arcata to do any work? I thought that that was part of a conversation that we had.
Sure. Yes, short answer. We will need to set some money aside for thirteen eighty-three. Exactly what shape that takes, I think, will will continue to flow through our budget process. The way that I interpret A is really coming up with a preferred implementation plan. And I I feel like a lot of that planning work has has sort of moved forward. For example, do we want to do it regionally? I think a lot of those questions have been and are continuing to be answered. So I think, you know, that's that's my own interpretation of A. If we wanted to add a goal that was more, you know, continue to implement and set aside funds for, that could be consistent. But I think sort of that determining a implementation plan, we're we're pretty, pretty solid on initially.
I had a question on item C. As pointed out by Rocker in the County Draft Action Plan, without monitoring, the Climate Action Plan threatens to be a plan that's on the shelf and is never realized. And so they had talked about monitoring and also to allow, as you, agency staff, to put, to more quickly react to unforeseen barriers to implementation. And I'd like to see, in addition to what you guys are doing, monthly goals from staff, council and the community, maybe with bi-monthly updates on our progress. And then we can tick the box, you know, just small goals that we can do as a city so that the community can feel like they're involved in this also.
I'm sorry, was that associated with the Climate Action Plan? You said C?
Yeah. I mean, we are crafting our Climate Action Plan.
Climate Action Plan is actually a regional.
Right, right. But we're not doing anything on our own to add to that or any, I mean, we're going to be implementing. It's been complete, the the draft, and it's circulated, but we are not doing anything as a city in our own climate action goals?
I wouldn't say that, but what I would say is that within the context of the Climate Action Plan, it has a really specific purpose and a specific structure. And it's not intended to house, you know, all the other, other kinds of.
Jurisdictions, right. Right.
I I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I I said it's not supposed to be housing the other jurisdictions, per se.
It does house actions of the other jurisdictions. What I was going to say was that it doesn't house other actions that we might be taking that have an impact on climate. I think that those might fall in other categories, that they would fall outside of the Climate Action Plan.
Okay. So when could I make a recommendation that we have monthly goals from like the community staff and council? What part would that fit?
Well, I I think what Emily also kind of alluded to is that it has been, you know, that that staff is working on it. They have monthly meetings and that they're looking for ongoing funding sources to be able to hire more permanent staff to work on implementation of the cap. And so that is in process right now and that, you know, we receive updates on the cap. Maybe not since you've been on the council, but we we have been receiving them fairly often, I would say, perhaps quarterly, every few months. So that's sounds kind of like what what you're alluding to.
Except for that, I guess I would like to see some community involvement in and that they might have some input that what we can do, small things as a city, so that we feel like, you know, we're involved. But, I mean, if there's nobody interested in doing something like that.
Well, I'm just not seeing how it fits into the the cap with what they're they're saying about the mechanism for for what that is.
Right. So what my question is, is when could I put forth that idea? What part of this document might that fit?
I was just going to say that we do have the community that they, people do show up or email us or call us with ideas. So, I mean, it's, we hear from the community quite a bit.
So I I just wanted to just add one other thing that I've thought about for years, digester, food digester. That's all I'm going to add that. And I was wondering if the police department could ever have a a green fleet? How far could you go with a green fleet?
As far as you want us to, as far as you tell us to.
As far as you can go, you don't have to worry about charging.
We'll run the rest of the way.
Alex, I think the digester goes under like SP thirteen eighty-three. I think that's something regionally that we're working on.
Yeah, and that's part of the the regional effort. I know, as Emily said, that they've been coordinating with HWMA on that stuff. And you know all about HWMA. Okay, I'm on the wrong page. Oh, no, because I'm on the next page. All right. Any any other new, anything to add to to climate that was not mentioned?
I got lost. I'm not sure. The owner of the property between US one oh one and South G Street, I'm probably the only one who doesn't know who that is, but I don't know who that is.
Item F, item F, under.
So last year in twenty twenty-two, the council considered real property, you know, potential purchase and sale agreement with the property owner at that that property. And that is owned by the Christie family. And but that that was a part of a goal and a, you know, consideration for acquiring that property for both sea level rise adaptation, stormwater detention, you know, future activities that really could be in line with our sea level rise adaptation strategy for protection of South G Street. But I think under this item F, there's also, you know, that is one example of some progress. But we have had many further progress being developed for sea level rise adaptation, including the the feasibility study for the next phases of the wastewater treatment plant, with that starting this month.
Your mic.
Okay, we know where it is now. That was off mic. But the one other thing I wanted to just quickly question and ask, because it wasn't under prioritized for future planning. But I know we've also been working on our update for the local coastal plan. Is that something that could maybe go under our sea level rise adaptation? Just to our continued update of that as well, because I know that is a priority that community development has.
Sure. Yeah, that, yeah, it's in there.
Okay, we're moving right along. We're on my time schedule. No. Okay, so parks improvements. And it looks like we have a lot of things to be proud of and check off our our list with parks improvements. So if you want to give us the overview here, that would be appreciated.
So for the specific parks improvements that were outlined in last year's goals, we did complete the fitness equipment at Shea Park. That also has a new bike share station and has been, you know, heavily used mural at the Shea Park Basketball Court. The next for B, Redwood Park improvements has been a big council and community priority. We have, the project is out to bid right now. That includes pump track designs, playgrounds, revamping and ADA parking improvements. And so as that is written, you know, we have completed those plans and we hope to start construction this fiscal year and conclude that in next fiscal year for the first phase of Redwood Park. And then the, for this next fiscal year, for the Annie and Mary Trail, we have been allocated our design and ride of way funds. So that will be a department priority. And so I would say continuing that on your goals as well.
Okay, can I add something? Or is it two, is it?
No, yeah, now's the adding.
Now's the adding time. Well, it looks like since we've taken two off, I would like to add that we look at that trail system, the one that goes up to Arcata Elementary and then the one that goes up to Eastern and is that that one? That whole trail system over there and like the crime and the safety and visibility of those trails.
Yeah, I know we've gotten a few requests about some of those footpaths. And I think especially with the Westwood Garden Apartments, with the growth there and other just general Cal Poly growth. I think, you know, assessing those trails is useful. Yes.
And I know that you were doing some updates on the one that was coming up from up from Lyons up to Western. Or I think it's North Street is where it actually comes to. Or I think it's North Street is where it actually comes to. So I do have something to add when you're ready.
Yeah, go ahead, Alex.
Okay, so, um, I've been thinking about the Veterans Garden that is on, um, Ninth, Ninth Street? No, Eighth Street, Eighth Street. And, um, and also that that's the F Street parking lot. And I've been thinking, is there a way to scale that back? We can still keep the rock and the bench, et cetera, and we can make it smaller. And then we can actually make a, add additional parking, which would probably bring in another four or five spaces there. So that's what I would, I don't know if anyone else is interested, but that's one item. My other item is that, um, uh, George, who we all know who he is out at the marsh, he spends about ten hours of his own time every week, uh, cleaning up the marsh. And we actually need more time than that. And I know, I don't, I doubt if we can pay him more because he's a part-time employee, but is there a way that we could maybe inter, get some other kind of help out there?
I mean, just, just to speak about the, um, level of maintenance at the marsh, um, just Environmental Services is a large department, the, our wastewater operators, um, do maintenance, um, especially around the components of the enhancement marshes. Um, and so that is staff time on the ground. Our natural resources crew goes through every day, um, and checks the, you know, pulls trash. Um, we also have the Humboldt Trails Council volunteer trail stewards that are, end up being in the marsh about every other month. Um, and as they've reported, they have, you know, hundreds, thousands of volunteer hours. Um, we also have the Friends, um, of the Arcata Marsh that do a lot of, um, volunteer work. Also, our Northern Humboldt Employment Services partners, um, also do active work in the marsh as well. Um, we have a, a local volunteer that has adopted the marsh on his walks. Um, so I guess I wanted to point out that we we have a lot, there's a lot of needs, you know, there, but there's also a lot of community energy and staff time, um, being, being put there now as well. So definitely open to the ideas, but we're trying to, um, put as much, um, effort as we can there.
I might add that Humboldt Pet Supply does a monthly cleanup at the marsh, too.
Great, okay, those are some, um, good additions. Those are some good things that we get to cross off this list. Um, very excited about the Redwood Park updates. Anything else anybody has right now to add to park improvements?
So, um, the vets garden.
Yeah, I did not add the vets garden.
Oh, I don't.
I'll, I'll drop George.
I don't like that one. No, I, I don't know, I I don't want to take away open space for parking. I don't think that's necessary. Plus, I know that the veterans, because I I had worked with some local businesses in the past that wanted to like adopt a garden space and that the veterans are actually kind of protective over that space and probably do not want to give it up, is my other assumption, um, and would not be happy about that. So I don't necessarily want to see that.
The reason I bring that up is a camping site. And, uh, I know it's, now I'm talking about my tenants, but I do have tenants that are in the back of the Moonrise Herbs building. And it's residential and there's three units there. And down that line, there's no other residents. And so that's an issue for them, that what goes on in the back of the Veterans Park and, um, and the people that congregate there, and then they congregate in the cars on both sides and so forth and so on. And it's something that they've complained about, my tenants probably over the last ten years, so I'm just bringing it up.
Um, on the, uh, two twenty-four from, I believe it was from Karen? Page seventeen, there's a mention, um, item number ten? Is this a good time to bring this up? So it's outreach for an implementation of a neighborhood-scale dog park at Valley West. So, just giving some energy back.
Yeah, dog park things should be under, under parks, yeah. And we, we talked about that previously, about both the, the Howland, Howland Drive, um, little parklet there, and then also the Larson Park, um, parklet idea as well. So, yes, those are parks improvements, yes, thank you. No, that was one I I had overlooked. Um, so if other folks are happy about continuing on the dog park things, I see none.
No, I think we better continue on that.
I have one other thing, and and that is, um, around the parks. And I don't know if I really agree with it, but, um, we have the needle exchange disposal, uh, containers. And it was suggested when we met with Hatcher that we consider putting some of those, um, big, um, red boxes in different areas, um, for needles to go into them. I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I think expanding that network of Sharps containers. I knew that I, I picked up some Sharps at the marsh and had a difficult time finding a place because somebody was in the bathroom over there, I know there's one, and they weren't opening up for me. So I came down here and gave them to city staff, but, um, not everybody would know to do that. Um, they might go to the police department. But to have a couple, you know, maybe at parks or or major areas where there are a need for Sharps disposal, um, at the marsh, maybe down in that, that I Street parking lot, et cetera.
So is there a way that they can go in, but they can't come out? Because I'm just thinking of children or whatever, so they're, okay. Okay, the ones that we use, um, when we do our park cleanup, they come in and out. Um, there's lids, you can just pop them open. But you're saying that there are specific ones that'll make sure we keep children safe.
I think we can work out the details.
Thank you, Meredith.
Okay, anything else for parks improvements? Thank you for those additions. All right, moving right along, transit and alternative transportation systems.
So is this where I can talk about HTA?
Yeah. You.
For item ten A, um, we are currently, uh, working with HCOG and HTA, working with a consultant called LSC, and they are working on our five-year transit development plan. They will be looking at our route efficiency, fares, and how we can improve that. So we are hoping we'll have that report by end of June. And once we have that, we can report that back to you. And also in that report, we are teaming up with Cal Poly Humboldt. And they have, they have put some money to expand that report to see, um, potential housing projects that they have and Captain Mall to add additional bus stop in that area or not, and how the transit could work for them.
So I'm not too sure if this is what you said, but, um, so with HTA, um, if we were interested in having a contract with them, that they would have all our, hire our drivers for us for our system, et cetera. I don't know if that's, you're, you don't want to do that, you want to maintain our own drivers, et cetera.
Uh, no, I did not say that. Uh, that's potentially one of the options that we'll be looking into for the next year, and we are in communication with HTA. It's definitely, as you know, it's very hard to find drivers, so we are looking to option. HTA is already maintaining our bus, we are parking our bus, so just looking into as they have a bigger driver pool. So we will ask them if they are able to provide that service to the city or not.
Well, when I.
And we'll be looking at that at an upcoming agenda as well.
Yeah, because.
That's on the docket.
Okay, I just wanted to, his, your head was going this way and I.
Oh, yeah, and the next one is our local road safety program that we started, uh, late last year. And, uh, the goal of that program is to look at the overall, uh, safety concerns throughout the city and try to, uh, propose improvements for those locations where there are traffic concerns. And, um, right now, um, we are at the draft level. Um, we are hoping to bring that to TSC sometime, end of the spring. And once that's been draft been finalized, then we'll bring it to the council for review.
Okay, so this is more of like a wish than a goal, because I don't know how feasible it is, but I'd love to look into, um, shuttle programs, like especially if we're talking about closing the plaza for cars, just having shuttles to take people from a point, just smaller, because I think the ridership right now is very small. So it'd be great to have smaller vehicles to get people from point A to point B.
So that will be part of our, that LSC is where our consultants are working on, our route analysis. So they will be looking into that, if that's feasible or not.
Could I ask a question? I was having difficulty getting that local, um, safety plan loaded. And so it was completed at the end of the year?
No, it's not completed yet. We are working on it, yes. The draft document will be coming to TSC for review sometime late spring. And once that draft is complete and we have a, at least a, just before the final document, it will come to council for review and update.
Perfect, thank you for that clarification.
Would this be an appropriate place to add, um, revisiting the bike safety plan, too? Don't we have a bike plan that hasn't been revamped since like twenty twelve?
Not, uh, we are not updating our bike and pedestrian master plan, but local road safety program will look into bicycle and pedestrian safety on the roads as well.
These are some pretty over, overarching ones you have, so you're, you're covering all of our ideas, which is great.
And then we have the bike lockers.
We do have bike lockers at the transit facility, and so all are utilized because they are cheap.
And they might get painted and as an art project or something, who knows? Who knows?
Okay, wonderful, um, so anything else for for transit? Um, it sounds like we have a lot of things covered under these two, um, plan updates that we're doing here, so. Um, thank you, Natra, and to your department for that work. Um, all right, so proactively maintain our strong partnership with Cal Poly Humboldt and make it even stronger. Um, and so we have our continuing to support Equity Arcata and then also maintaining regular communication through our liaison meetings, um, creating a sense of community surrounding public art cleanups, events, and understanding the student population in regards to housing and transportation. So anything that we want to modify or add to this? This obviously seems to be ongoing, continuing work that we're gonna do. Um, I I did hear earlier come up, Kimberly brought up, it's kind of maybe working with Cal Poly Humboldt to continue that green and gold corridor to the, the area of Valley West. I really, I really like that idea to just add that to that beautification point and, you know, have them have that same community sense. They do have some nice banners and signs, you know, welcome students, but, um, I think adding some more stuff might be great.
Thank you. Um, I did get, Wesley Chesbro reached out to me, knowing that I am an advocate for Valley West. And, um, there seems to be a lot of interest right now from the Comfort Inn with the students and doing a community garden. Um, and I know with the two more hotels coming in, and then of course the two Home Key, um, this might be a good time to get some, um, I don't know, might have some momentum for this. So, um, I did reach out to the resident advisor, um, to begin the conversation. Um, and Kuna is, um, going to also try to see how we might be able to work out something, perhaps with one of our local organizations, maybe Rotary, they've, uh, indicated some interest in partnering. So, um, I don't know how the city can or can't, but I I guess the reason I'm bringing it up is because if a community garden were to happen, the only property that would be available is city-owned, which would be the two parks out there. Um, well, three parks, but there's no, um, nothing is in the design for Carlson Park for community garden. But, um, so, yeah. Park, Howland Drive, Valley West, Garden.
Yeah, I think adding something about, yeah, exploring with Cal Poly to help support them in creation of a community garden for students out there, I think that's a great thing.
For the whole community, not just the students.
Well, they're part of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, um, and, and, yeah, partnering with them to be able to to make something happen, so.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
So that would be on city property?
Perhaps.
I mean, I would think if it was on the Comfort Inn property, you know, all summer long, it's going to be back to, uh, TOT people.
Well, it, we were thinking more of having it, um, doing a, a rainwater catchment system, possibly off of one of the two buildings that are being leased. So I have put out trying to get ahold of the two owners to see if they would allow us to do that. So we wouldn't actually have to install any water, which would be about seventeen thousand, so we don't have to do that if we can get permission. And, um, then we would keep it for, you know, the students, everybody in the community could use it as opposed to having it at the Comfort Inn. They, they were thinking, that what my understanding from Wesley and and from the RA was that they weren't thinking about it being on site at the Comfort Inn, but somewhere in Valley West where they would have access, as well as the other two hotels and the Home Key and everybody else that lives out there.
So we have Bayside Gardens, and then we have the garden over here by the church right now. That, that's, they're self-maintaining, you know, we work with the Bayside Garden, but the other one over here on, on F and Eleventh, they self-maintain that. So that's what you're considering, you have a self-maintained, uh.
Correct, we would build up a volunteer base and, um, yeah, it would be similar to what Sancho de Pueblo is, is that they person their own garden and Bayside, I used to volunteer out there. So we would just solicit volunteers from the community and anybody who wants to give some love to Valley West.
Okay, so parking meters, I'm gonna add that under trans.
Where, why, how, yeah.
Well, it was in the re, uh, Rocker report, too, is that, um, and it's been discussed over the years that maybe the parking lot, like, uh, F Street parking lot, et cetera, um, you would have, you would go and, you would pick a ticket out, you'd pay for a ticket, and you would put it in your windshield of your car, and it would be good for four hours or for whatever it is. And, um, I just thought I would bring that up because it's been a long-term discussion. At one time, Arcata had parking meters, that was before nineteen seventy. But they did have them and they took them out, and we have parking meters now up at Cal Poly.
Isn't it an app?
Yeah, we do have a parking app, Park Mobile now in the city. So I think what I'm hearing is that you're suggesting city lots are required to have paid parking, is that?
Or, and maybe other streets.
Yeah, look, okay, so looking at, you know, paid parking for cities, yeah.
It's an opportunity to look at that and, um.
Yeah, I love charging people for parking.
It might be a good idea when we get into the gateway and for parking there, too. Along with Zip Cars, I'm just adding that, Zip Cars.
Okay, so brief, brief, uh, jump back to ten, but I think we're done with eleven, too. Is there anything that anybody wants to add on the, the Cal Poly? Okay, so that takes us to, to twelve, thirteen, fourteen, which are all kind of short, complete slash ongoing ones. Um, explore options to expand the council meeting space. I know that, um, is beginning its process, correct?
Yeah, I think you'll be able to take it off of next fiscal year. I think we'll have it done or underway this fiscal year, so you won't need it as a goal. Um, as well as our just policy on public meeting recording retention will also be done by the end of this fiscal year.
I had one little goal I wanted to talk about that kind of goes with both of those. That has to do with records and meetings and whatnot. Um, I am interested in having an option for us to go paperless for agendas. Um, and so whether that looks like, you know, the, the use to be able to check out a tablet or, you know, your city-issued laptop or your own personal laptop, whatever, um, that looks like. But, um, I, I would be interested in going paperless because I just feel very wasteful as I use old agendas to start fires at home. Um, so, uh, I, I would like to see that, if that's something people are interested in. I think it would be an easy thing to check off, I think it would be fairly cheap. Um, and I would like to have all this paper.
You should ask Dylan to come out and tell you why he stopped it. Because we used to be paperless, we had a small lap, little, oh, I don't know, it's like an iPad kind of thing, and it had a keyboard on it, and that was our agenda was on there, and you didn't have paper. No paper at all. There was only one council member that insisted upon having paper in those days, but everybody else was using this pad. And so Dylan took it away, it went away.
Dylan did take it away.
I asked Dylan, where was it, where is it? And he said, I took it away.
What really happened was that as we got into the pandemic, it was really hard to manage being, having to be on screen on Zoom and have your agenda on that same screen. So, uh, we really, the council did shift back into paper agendas during the pandemic when we were on Zoom the whole time. So, um, I think it would be something we certainly could explore if the council wants to go back to paperless agendas.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm down, I just need to wait a, wait a write on them. You know, I want to, that needs to be part of it, because I've written all over all my stuff, so.
Yeah, most little tablets now have like styluses, right? And you can kind of mark them up or, I always watch, David, you have one, and I'm always jealous of, you're taking all your notes and it's all on there. Or, or also, you know, with, when, if it's a laptop kind of setup, like, you know, you can edit PDFs and I, I see what you've done here, right? And to be able to add the colors and the highlights, I mean, there's, there's lots of ways to make sure that we can have that. But, I mean, also, you know, if, if you don't want to be paperless, that's, that's fine, too. But to make it an option, I think is, is a good step.
I am definitely up for that.
Well, you can, right now, if you chose to, you don't have, you could say you don't want any paper and you can go on, Bridget puts out the agenda, and it comes over online, it comes through our website.
I just don't have a, a way to, I mean, I can do it on my phone, but I don't have a, I don't have a way to do it.
Oh, you don't have a computer?
I mean, I have a computer, but that's, that's cumbersome for me, I don't like, and it's my work computer.
I think it's a good thing to explore.
Okay, I've read my agenda on that, on my phone before, it's a little on the difficult. Okay. I've read my agenda on that, on my phone before. It's a little on the difficult side, but I have.
Okay. And then our last item is just both complete, because I know we finalized our language on the land acknowledgement, so that can be brought off, but also just our ongoing, working on our governmental relationships with local tribes. I know we allocated some funding as well to continue that process, so.
Yeah, and I'm continuing to build upon that. I'm also trying to work with the tribe to perhaps rename the D Street Neighborhood Center to Wiat name, and we could go even further and change the...
And rename L.K. Wood, yeah, because he's a colonizer.
Yeah, both of those things are projects that I'm working on.
And so, agreed, if, I am interested, and again, working with the tribe on bringing, yeah, some local Wiat place names into some city buildings or streets that we have, and being able to work with them to finalize that. I'm, yeah.
I'm up for that, too, and I'm super excited that Carlson Park is going to be doing placards in the Wiat language, so. I'm wondering if we might explore an opportunity down the road of maybe some land back, maybe for some housing development, or?
So adding on to 14, I did, we did have a suggestion through public comment about some type of display of the acknowledgement that, that we read. And so I did talk to Karen about that, you know, maybe starting with something not super fancy, but at least a printout to put out there, and then we could work towards a plaque or something, so.
What a lovely idea. I like that.
So I thought, what it came from, came from the community. So I'd like to do that. And then I had something else that I've been working on. So it was brought to my attention through my grandfather that he remembered there being a Chinatown here in Arcata. And so I ended up having some conversations with some of the people from the Eureka Chinatown Project and from Happy, and we have met a couple of times just to kind of look into that. And there is some, a little bit, not a lot, of documentation and research about the couple of areas in town where those were. And so we actually did a walking tour today of that and checked it out. And so we've kind of, I've kind of done all I can do as just me by myself, doing the groundwork without, you know, without council backing it. So I, I don't think, we've got some kind of cool ideas, and I don't know that we would really get to much this year. Some of it has to do with redevelopment. But if you guys are interested, I'd like to continue to work on that.
Absolutely. That sounds wonderful. And, and I'd like to, yes, 100% yes, and that is wonderful. And it's just going to be such an important thing coming up, too. I had the opportunity this last weekend, I am a history teacher, as many people know, but there is going to be a new state requirement for high school students that they have to take at least. I think it's a semester, and some schools are going to do a year of ethnic studies. And to really look in, especially a big component of that is like your local history of, you know, previously historically disadvantaged groups. And so I was thinking about you the whole time while they were talking about different, like Chinatown projects like that and stuff. And so it's going to be, you know, an important thing for our, you know, both Cal Poly and local high school students to be able to tap into that resource, too. And also, if you want a historically minded person to help you out, let me know. I'd be more than happy to, you know, help meet with those folks, too. So that's really exciting. I definitely want to see that added to our list. I think that's awesome.
And yes, here, too. Thank you.
So I think the Humboldt Room has a document that was done a number of years ago. And there was an area that was all, basically all Italian in Arcata. And during the Second World War, they were supposed to stay there and not come across certain roads to, you know, et cetera. So we have a lot of, we have a lot of ethnic groups that have been in Arcata over the years, and during different things, struggles and wars, they've had different things that they couldn't do or could do.
Okay, so, oh, something on that subject, because I was going to say, now you brought up a thing that was not really under one of the categories. So if we have anything that doesn't necessarily fit under one of these categories or anything else that we'd like to add, the hope is that we wrap up by about nine o'clock. So we got about 20 minutes to kind of either add things or really, you know, prioritize anything if folks want to add now.
Could I still do something on 14?
Yeah.
Okay, so I feel like we do need to do more than just land acknowledgement. We did talk about some other opportunities, some ideas that maybe would address some past injustices to restore the ancestral wetlands of the Wiat tribe. There's a federal government, has a section 216A of the executive order of 14008, which has established the first ever national conservation goal, calling for the conservation of at least 30% of US lands and waters by 2030. I believe that Eureka is doing something over by the Eel River in that respect, and to help states and cities address climate change and environmental injustice. So just putting that out there.
Yeah, no, I think it would be great, and then just to, again, partnership with the tribe on that, because they, you know, get a lot of funding as well to do projects like that. So to be able to partner with them and target, you know, spaces that they think are significant to the Wiat people and work on that, I think that could be really interesting, yeah. So anything else that folks didn't get a chance to bring up, that might not have fallen under one of these categories? Anything else on folks' minds before we turn it over to staff? Maybe if they have anything else that they want to add as well. But I know we'll get a lot of, some of that staff input during our budget session as well.
So I don't know if this was put somewhere, because I kind of blurted it out, but flashing crosswalk, I know that we can probably only do one out in Valley West, but it's like a game of Frogger out there. As many know, there was a hit and run not that long ago, and we're going to be adding 400 to, 450 to 500 more bodies out there. It strategically, it seems it makes sense right by the bus stop, because it's in between the five motels that are going to be the three for the students and the two for Home Key, and it also will be the one that goes straight over to the shopping center. So if there was going to be any flashing crosswalk or something out there, crosswalk enhancements, that would be the spot. So I'm really hoping that we might look into that before something bad does happen.
Natra, does that kind of maybe fall under any of your listed things? Just looking at some of those pedestrian improvements and where key areas, especially in Valley West, are for that?
Yes, definitely. We can look into it. We are already, yesterday we had a meeting. We are applying for a grant, Clean Symphony Grant, and as a part of that grant, we'll be including some of the sidewalk and crosswalk improvements for that area.
Wonderful. Thank you for that update.
No, I was just going to say, I support all safety projects, but I just wanted to make sure that we, we originally had asked Natra and the TSC to really give us an overview, so we didn't just, you know, start doing things, you know, in random, you know, not random, but places that maybe were important to us, or that we had heard from a community member. So I just want to make sure that we have, you know, a global picture of our entire town, and then we get the recommendations on what are those really troublesome areas, so that we can just be really thoughtful, because we don't have enough resources. We know we've gotten a lot of complaints about different roads. We get them almost every meeting. And so we, there's no way we're going to get to all of those. So I'd really like to get his opinion and prioritize what we should do.
So I do have another one. When we're talking about social justice and equity, what comes to mind is our meetings. I would love to see if we could have a bilingual closed caption in Spanish, and maybe just investigate or just have a conversation. Actually, I believe Zoom has a way to do it, but I think we're doing high level right now, so maybe just see if that is a possibility or interpretation. And then also, you know, I know a lot of parents would love to come. If we could somehow do some onsite childcare, it doesn't actually have to cost us anything. We could also serve a light meal, have some of the local restaurateurs bring over a pizza or a salad. Parents can come in here and attend the meeting, you know, both get off work, grab the kids from childcare, and then bring them over here so that they can have some fun and excitement date night at city council meeting. And then also...
Bring the kids.
Also thinking of a shuttle. I know a lot of the older adult community, they don't like to drive at night. So they're zooming in, but they would much rather be here if we could do some kind of shuttle, and that might be something that we could work with, I don't know who. But if we could look into that, and same thing with the students. A lot of students, we don't want them to bring their cars. And so often, our meetings go later than the last bus. So something I'd like to put out there.
Well, I'll have to sort of whip all around town, because I know a lot of people that won't drive at night either, for one reason or another, so.
So did that, does that happen, like, anybody show any interest? Does it get put up on somewhere so that it's...
It's on the screen.
It is. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I'm happy to look into those bilingual capabilities. I think that's an interesting, you know, thing to bring. I know some people have brought it up before. Again, shuttle, I think that feasibility of just smaller scale bus services being looked at in other areas, but...
And I apologize, I only have reading glasses, so it's just blurry right now. I left my driving glasses in the car. Oh, right in front of me. Okay, thank you.
There's screens everywhere. All right, city staff. Do we have anything else that you guys want to add at this point, or anything that you want to say? Or questions for us, comments?
I just have a question on item 10C, paid parking for the city parking lot. And then it says city streets, so we have lots of city streets. I just want to make sure, are we focusing on specific area for paid parking or throughout the city?
Yeah, like downtown, I would assume downtown, like shopping area where there's high levels of parking, or where there's impacted parking, again, to why, yeah, we would charge people to deter them from driving. Is that what you meant, Alex? I'm looking at you as I'm guessing what you meant.
They get parking tickets right now, so that's one, one way the city, well, it doesn't make much money. The city doesn't make a lot of money off the parking tickets. I don't know if you make any money off of this, but in the past, there's been discussion about city parking lots and how they should be actually, we should be able to collect, people pay to park. I guess that would be the way you'd say it. And definitely, if you're in certain zones around Cal Poly, you get a one pass, and then you pay for your friends to park. So you get more than one. You might have two or three. And if you have anyone comes to your house, you make sure they put them on, otherwise they get tickets.
I did have one more I just thought of, because I'm looking at the other document. The committee chair on 221, the one I missed, study session under the public safety packet, page 20, talked about a community farmer's market maybe in Valley West. I know that North Coast growers at one point said they didn't have the capacity. I'm wondering if that might be something we could explore.
I think that's something that we can maybe work with Humboldt Maide to do. I know they do something like that in Blue Lake, so.
For a farmer's market?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, staff didn't have anything else. So I guess with that, thank you, everybody, for being here. And thank you, council and staff, for all your hard work. And I think our meeting is...
I'm sorry, I just, there's this other document. Why did you include it in the packet? If, I mean, was it just for reference? Because there's some things that I made notes of, like...
Yeah, we, that's like the staff desires and kind of recommendations, too. And so basically, between that and our priorities, that, those lists are going to kind of be integrated into our budget. And I think that during budget review, we're going to go a lot deeper into those lists of like, you know, capital improvement projects and things like that.
So could I just add one, just last one? Security cameras in high-risk areas was something that I believe the... Public safety. It said high-risk areas. I mean, I can pull it up, but just something, just to put it on the radar.
Yeah, that was, that was from our chairs meeting. That was on that list, I believe.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. And with that...
I only heard one for that.
Yeah, I'm not super hot on surveillance, honestly. Not, not into it.
And you have to have internet for them, and somebody has to pay for that. Anyway.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Everything costs money.